Okay, now we're on the clock, Don. And now we're on the clock, Don.
Okay, well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council's study session for this Monday, February thirteen, two thousand and twenty-three. So we have various items for discussion tonight. The first is a Lakewood Multicultural Coalition update. And for this, I believe, we have our Deputy Mayor, Mary Moss, as well as the LMCC board members. Ms. Moss, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is my pleasure to introduce my board members that are here tonight that were able to join us tonight. We have Kathy Trammell, Kathy Lanning, going back in time. Kathy retired from Harborstone Credit Union, and Grant Twiman from the Clover Park School District. If you guys want to say more about yourself, you can. You can use any mic.
Thank you. Testing, testing. Oh, okay, sorry about that. Good evening.
Good evening.
City Mayor, council members, Mr. Caulfield, I think I saw him on the screen, and Mr. Caulfield, I saw you somewhere. Good to see you tonight. And members of the public, good evening. My name is Grant Twiman. I'm the Director of Equity and Community Engagement with the Clover Park School District. In addition to that, in my off time, I wear a number of hats, including being a part of the Lakewood Multicultural Coalition Board of Directors. Happy to be here tonight. Deputy Mayor Moss, thank you for having me. My goal tonight is to do a really brief overview on some of the work that the LMCC organization's been doing over the last year. And so it's going to be for two thousand and twenty-two, which is hard to do because we've been so busy already in two thousand and twenty-three. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna do this quick recap and then open for any questions if there's time. First thing that we like to highlight is just to state our mission, right? And our mission is to provide a voice to all people in communities through celebration, empowerment, and inclusion. And the emphasis and the focus of our work is right here in the city of Lakewood. Some things that we've been up to, and these will be in chronological order. So really early in the year, this is a this is an effort led by the city of Lakewood. The LMCC board and members participate in a number of ways, and that's the annual MLK celebration. The LMCC board is completely committed to the planning committee as well as the event. And picture here is one of the board members, Superintendent of the School District, part of the video, which for two thousand and twenty-two was "The World Lives in Lakewood." Additionally, following that, another really important program and project that the city has in partnership with the school district is the Hidden Heroes Campaign, which the LMCC board members are are part of the planning committee identifying local and national heroes from the Black community. So that's Lakewood, the broader Lakewood community, as well as all across the nation, highlighting different figures and how they've impacted the community as a whole. Here, we kind of spread out events from March all the way through September. LMCC has been part of Carnival of Cultures with the city of Lakewood, the Farmer's Market, Air Force Ball, as well as participated in the in support of the American Cancer Society Strides Walk, which raised upwards of forty thousand dollars for the American Cancer Society. So a number of events LMCC is committed to, not just developing programs and supports for the community, but also partnering what for things that are already happening, things that already exist. And then the last highlight we have for you tonight, this was in November. Countering rounding out our years, we're thinking through strategically, what does LMCC do in two thousand and twenty-three? We thought it was fitting to organize a group of students and and hear from hear from them on what they would like to see in their community. And we emphasize the conversation outside of the school as LMCC is positioned well to make impact either through partnerships or as an organization as a whole. So this was an incredible event with about a dozen students. Most of the board came by. We had lunch and spent probably ninety minutes taking notes on feedback from the students to that would impact and inform some programs and projects that we launched, two thousand and twenty-three and beyond. On the horizon for LMCC is, I'm sure you all are very aware, so I'm going to plug it down, the March third, Dr. Claudia Thomas Gala. This is an annual event that LMCC will organize and coordinate, and so this is the first annual event. And we're all pumped for that. Other things that we have on the horizon is increasing multicultural civic engagement, support for the city and district events. Again, that's that partnership that we have with the city and other organizations throughout the city of Lakewood, community partnerships, and then, of course, support and engagement for our students. And that's really the heart of of the Deputy Mayor and the LMCC CEO, Ms. Moss, who reminds us of the reason this organization exists is to ensure that students are engaged along the way. So and then having board members that work for the school district is just very strategic. So so it goes without saying. Pending any questions, that that concludes our brief and our update.
Thank you, Mr. Twiman. Any questions?
I would just like to say, Mr. Mayor, that Kathy Lanning is part of our board, and so is Councilmember Branstad. Councilmember Branstad is our treasurer. We appreciate him for that. So, Mike, if you have anything.
You're letting him handle the checkbook?
Much, yes.
No, Ms. Mayor, I'm going to say that I'm, that I think that the you know, LMCC complements our goals of trying to have a, you know, an inclusive community where people feel that they belong here and are appreciated. And that's not something you can just say. It's something that you have to work at and having people feel it based on what they experience. And I think that the LMCC is a good partner in a lot of the efforts that the city makes in that regard at at the programs that we put on in the parks and and things that we sponsor with the school district and otherwise. So I think that it's a value-adding organization to us and is compatible with 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 our vision for the community.
Thank you very much.
I will just add to what you have heard. On March third, six to ten P M. At Clover Park Technical College, we will be honoring Dr. Claudia Thomas and National Women's History Month. It's a gala. I hope you guys will come and join us. It's gonna be a lot of fun. MC is going to be Joyce Taylor from King Five Evening News. The music is going to be provided by Michael Powers and Josephine Howell. So if you go to our website, you can scan the code and it'll take you right into the form to where you can sign up, buy a seat, buy a table, and come and have fun. Any other questions?
Already got my tickets.
I know you did. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Is there going to be any sort of preview or information sharing about the Dr. Claudia Thomas House with Habitat? Are we celebrating or promoting that at this event or separately?
It's separate. Her daughter is going to be my guest speaker, Lisa. So she'll talk about the history of her mother for us.
Got it.
But the Dr. Claudia House is under another organization.
Habitat for Humanity. Yeah, I just want to, I don't know if there's information out there, but that's certainly a worthwhile endeavor and organization honoring Claudia's memory here in the community. So.
Yeah, and I can add that to Lisa.
Sure. I know a lot of folks are supporting that.
So come, John, and have fun. It's gonna be a great evening. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the update. Good to see you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have our Joint Lakewood's Promise Advisory Board. So come on up, everyone. We'll chat a little bit about the work plan. And Carrie, you're gonna introduce members of the committee. Hank, I didn't see you at the gym, Hank, this week. What's the deal, man? I didn't see you at the gym this week. What's up? All right.
It's okay to take a break. Well. Well, good evening, Mayor Whedlin, Deputy Mayor Moss, and council members. My name is Carrie Pedrick, and I am this year's Lakewood's Promise Advisory Board Chairperson. So I'd like to introduce the Promise Board members who are present with me tonight, Co-Chair Megan Dempsey, Mary Dodsworth, Ellie Wilson, and then Youth Council Liaison Fatima Hernandez, Hank Jones, and Ally Lasky. Thanks for being here. Tonight, we'd like to take the opportunity to highlight Lakewood's promises to our youth and the accomplishments of our advisory board this past year, including work to strengthen families through workforce development and supporting youth mental health. Finally, we plan to share how we will work to support the entire Lakewood community to fulfill our promises to our young people this coming year. Now I'm going to turn it over to our Chair of Many Years and One of Lakewood's Promise Founders, Ellie Wilson, to provide highlights of the two thousand and twenty-two Workforce Development Initiative.
Good evening, council members here in Lakewood. It's a pleasure to see all of you again. And I have to say that I am absolutely delighted to have Carrie and Megan following my footsteps because it's always always good to have energetic young people taking up the passion and the role of our advisory board. Okay, so to let you know a little bit more about the Workforce Development Service. In two thousand and twenty-two, the career team administered a Lakewood Thrive Program with the purpose of connecting and engaging the residents of Lakewood. And we wanted to engage those people in an environment which provides sustainability, an environment of self-sufficiency through high-wage training programs offered by our local community, our technical colleges, and the Workforce Development Services available. During the year, the career team accomplished the following things. The team hosted twenty-four outreach boost events at various locations throughout the city of Lakewood, mostly focusing in our at-risk communities such as Springbrook. Number two, the focus was also on manufacturing technologies such as heating, ventilation, air conditioning, electricity, computer programming, cybersecurity, accounting, aerospace, kinesiology, welding, dentistry, and licensing for commercial drivers. Approximately seven hundred and forty community members were in attendance at these events. And out of the seven hundred and forty, approximately two hundred and twenty-three individuals actually took part. In closing, these accomplishments directly serve our youth by providing them and their families with a healthy start, which is one of our promises, as well as three other promises, such as caring adults, safe places to work, and having a good education. Now, this this presentation will be turned over to our Youth Council, and they're going to discuss, give you a report on mental health issues and the two thousand and twenty-two summit.
All right. Good evening, everyone. It's an honor to be back in front of all of you. My name is Hank Jones. I go to Harrison Prep, and I am in my senior year and also in my fourth year of Youth Council and in my first year as co-chair. So, yeah, very familiar to this building, but it's always, it's always great to be here.
I'm Fatima Hernandez, and I'm a senior at Harrison Prep. And this is my first year as a Youth Council member.
Hello, my name is Ally Laska. I am a junior at Harrison Preparatory, and this is also my first year in Youth Council.
All right, thank you. Now I'm gonna be discussing the youth mental health with you guys. So Joshua Chambers, MacOva Park High School Youth Wellness Specialist, partnered with one of the principals at Lakes High School to outline a program for their student leaders utilizing a curriculum that he wrote called Wellness Conversations. The conversations are mental health and wellness topics such as coping skills, anxiety, stress, self-awareness, social media, healthy relationships, and self-care that will be facilitated by student leaders that are part of the student leadership class at Lakes. So they collaborated with community and schools about wellness projects for Clover Park High School. They provided wellness check-ins for students from all three Clover Park School District high schools. They collaborated with Clover Park School District Equality, Diversity, and Inclusion Team over student mentor curriculums, inflammation, provided mentoring for fifteen males males of color at Clover Park High School. They finalized plans for CPC student leader training and three different sessions. A spring survey results from four hundred high school students show the following: Forty-four percent that they want peer support for mental health issues. Sixty-nine percent are dealing with anxiety, and seventy percent are dealing with stress. We requested time to be built into each class. Talk about mental health and coping strategies. Thank you. And now pass it on to Ally, who will discuss about our upcoming Youth Summit.
So I'm actually going to be talking about the results of our last Youth Council Summit, and Hank will like talk about the one that we have planning for this year. But last week, we hosted the Lakewood Youth Summit, and it was attended by a hundred and nineteen Clover Park District students from Harrison Prep, Clover Park, Lakes, Claudia Thomas, Loughran, and Huddloff Middle School, of course. And like, we discussed topics like the vendor and breakout sessions focused on topics such as youth mental health, the workforce development, and financial literacy. Thirty-five organizations and businesses participated in the vendor expo and breakout sections, which included fun and interactive activities and like prizes for students. Eighty-two people played in the video game track that was popular. This, and then we had a student voice session where students were encouraged to share their voice multiple ways. And a special thanks to the mayor for hosting two breakout sessions to listen and have conversations with youth attending the summit. And then during the event, students said, speaking with the companies participating in the vendor expo, the raffle, having free gym time, and having the game track available for them were their favorite parts of their day. So that's very enjoyable for students.
Just sharing one mic. Thank you, Ally, and thank you, Fatima. So this year's Youth Summit will occur on Saturday, June tenth, from eleven to three at Clover Park Technical Colleges, Building twenty-four. Our focus, as always, will be on gathering our Clover Park School District high school students in one room to focus on how we can collectively and individually support each other and our community. In addition to that, over the course of our year, we're hosting three roundtable discussions, each focusing on a relevant current topic with the purpose of giving our youth a safe space to use their voice to guide city management and our local elected officials towards making positive changes on relevant issues. The first was on homelessness at Clover Park High School. The second will be in March at Harrison Prep. And our third will be on police accountability at Lakes in May. Thank you for this opportunity to share. I'll turn it over to Carrie Pedrick and Megan Dempsey to talk about our two thousand and twenty-three goals.
Thank you, Hank, Fatima, and Ally. It's so awesome that you guys are on this board with us. You bring so much to it. It's really appreciated. And a special thank you to Ellie for everything you've done on this board and and this entire community for Lakewood. Thank you for all the years that you put into this community. Everybody appreciates that. So. Okay, so what are the promises for the Lakewood Promise Board? One, caring adults to guide and encourage. Two, save places, both physical and psychological, in which youth can safely develop. Three, a healthy start and a healthy future. Four, an effective education that prepares them for work and life. Five, opportunities to help others, a sense of community, self-respect, and service. Those are the five promises. So as you've seen on our two thousand and twenty-three work plan, we hope to continue overseeing and improving the two initiatives began last year, which is the youth mental health and the workforce development. But we acknowledge there's a lot more work to be done, and we can confidently say that as a community, we are fulfilling our pledge of the five promises to every young person in the Lakewood community. I'm privileged to have the opportunity to serve alongside our youth on this advisory board, but also in my work with communities and schools of Lakewood.
I'm, oh, I think this is my part.
Oh, shoot. I was so excited to. Yeah. But, but I was like, I know your community is in school, so there you go.
But we're also privileged to work alongside St. Clair in our work with with young people, with communities and schools. And I just want to add, we know our young people are amazing, right? The young people of Lakewood are amazing, and many of them are doing really well. A lot of them believe in themselves, and they're on their path, become the people that they were destined to be. We also know a lot of kids and the adults that care about them are struggling. They're struggling to make, to meet their basic needs. They're struggling to keep their heads above water. They're struggling to feel included and involved. Young people are struggling, right? And we can hold these two things in tension at the same time and know both are true, that our young people are resilient and amazing, and also that they're struggling. And so that's the reality that we are in right now. And I think sometimes it's difficult for us adults, especially when we're facing challenges, to keep young people and their well-being front and center when we're making decisions that affect them. So that's our goal this year of as the Lakewood Advisory Promise Board is to keep young people at the center, even with distractions, keeping young people at the center in all of the things that we do, actually listening to them and to dig deep and to really understand how are the children of Lakewood. So we can understand how we as a community, a whole community, not just our board or not just city council, but how as a community, if we're fulfilling our five promises and how we're falling short. So our board this year also is planning on creating a communication plan so that the entire community can better understand their own role in helping Lakewood fulfill our promise. So every single kid has those five basics. So we'd like to thank the council, of course, for continuing Lakewood Promises work for the past twenty-six years and for the financial support for staffing and for activities for the current budget. And thank you for your time this evening for our update and your deep care for young people and their families of Lakewood. So we will answer questions as you have them.
Absolutely. Mr. Boke, do you have some questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Carrie, I'd like you to take a victory lap on what I just showed you. And I want, and you were telling me you're already doing some mental health communities and schools is already doing some mental health in the schools. And then it looks like you're getting more money, hopefully, tomorrow. What does that, what does that program look like, and how does that fit into what is going on with the school district? How do you dovetail those two?
Yeah, we, as a kind of organization with communities and schools, about a year and a half ago, two years ago, we came together and said, what are the needs that young people have that we're not able to meet? There were two things that rose to the top. Housing insecurity. It is really hard to work with a student or a family and to give them a phone number to call and then hope for the best. And so we've added a housing stability coordinator this year in partnership with the school district so that way we can be the intake specialists for coordinated access point for housing. So CIS has a Lakewood-based access point for housing intake worker, and we can work with any student or family in Lakewood. The other thing was mental health. That's a priority of the Lakewood's Promise Advisory Board because it is a priority for young people. That's what they are saying, and I'm proud of them for bringing that to to light, right? Our our community needs to hear that and do something about it. So Communities and Schools has developed a wellness program funded through Pierce County, a wellness coordinator. So we have a full-time wellness coordinator, so does the school district. And they partner together in some of some of the work, leading small groups, doing referrals, and doing kind of wellness proactive inclusion, individual and small group work at the schools that we're in. Yeah. So, yeah, Paul got to share some exciting news that we're, we'll be able to expand that program to more students within the schools that we serve.
Someone dig into that, and then I'll have questions. So Carrie, tell me a little bit about the housing coordinator piece because we often hear about housing needs generally. This is certainly more specific to families, obviously, with students in the district, right? So I want to know a little bit, A, how it's going, and B, with whom are you coordinating or directing families in need to resources?
It is going well, as well as something that's really hard can go. Yes, so we have our site coordinator, case manages, a group of, I think she's up to twenty-five students who are experiencing houselessness, works in an after-school program for for students, and then does case management for those students and families. And what we're really excited about is that they've, that site coordinator has been trained through Catholic Community Services and and literally been deputized as an intake worker. So she has access to diversion funds herself.
Person on your staff?
Person on my staff has gone, it's a community housing resolution partnership with Catholic Community Services. So that way, we don't have to send someone to do an intake meeting into coma or on the phone.
Oh, great.
Our housing stability specialist can do it right then and there. And we are just really excited to be able to provide direct housing resources. And actually, just our first rent check went out to a young person who's a graduate of our high school program, caretaking for a younger sibling, going to community college and being successful and struggling to pay rent. And so we were able to work with the the diversion program and and pay her rent this month.
Great. And those resources are coming from where?
Catholic Community Services.
Catholic Community Services, okay.
Yep, and and the Community Housing Response Program. And then she's trained through a couple of different programs. So youth experiencing houses, so sixteen to twenty-four, she can access some funds, other funds for families.
The reason why I'm digging in a little bit is just sometimes we sit up here and we we hear so much stuff, and we're always trying to connect the dots, right? Because we have the one percent for human services funding, and we allocate it to food, housing, mental health, youth, those kinds of things. And we're trying to always know, are we having an impact? Where are we missing the boat, right? What can we do better? And so this intake information is helpful. And we'd love to, of course, dig in, in a probably a form other than tonight, because I don't have as much time, but just to really understand, you know, it's a very personal deal, and where we're missing the boat or where we're hitting the mark on providing the resources, because it's important to do what we can. We have to leverage and partner as best we can, as it sounds like we're doing. But there's obviously more need. And then you have all these other providers out there, and what's the overlap? And what's the complementary activity? And, you know, all that sort of thing. So it's a big multi-headed Hydra, as we all know on that. So you have a common question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for coming, all of you. So I had a question regarding what you guys are doing currently, because you mentioned that you're going to be working on a communications plan. So currently, what are you doing to reach non-traditional English-speaking houses or where there might be cultural barriers, things, learning like that, so that they have access to the housing options, the mental health? So I wondered what you're currently doing and if you're going to be adding some things to your upcoming plan.
So our work continues in two thousand and twenty-three for the Workforce Development, which is a contract with Career Team, and then the Youth Mental Health, which is a contract with the school district, and Josh Chambers, the the wellness coordinator. So Lakewood's Promise Advisory, those are the two initiatives that we're continuing. And and I would say that those are good questions that we might have for for the contractors that we that we've worked with this this last year.
Mary, do you have something that you'd like to add?
I don't think I have a good response.
Belle was asking about was the communication plan and our, how we're going to be communicating with those families that might not utilize traditional, you know, newsletters or the emails and things like that. How are we going to be reaching them? And we're in the And we're in the we're just in the beginning stages of developing this communication plan. Amazing team of folks representing all kinds of different organizations with expertise in that area, including the city and the school district, et cetera. Carrie's on that team as well. And so she may be able to give you a little bit more information, but I think that's what she was asking for is how are we going to be reaching these families so they can come and utilize these amazing services, not just of communities and schools, but all the partners in our community. We know we're so collaborative in Lakewood. It's it's really kind of unbelievable when you walk outside into other communities and you don't understand how they're not all working together like we are. So that, we're already a step ahead. But but how do we reach those folks? And we have new folks coming in all the time, so we can't always just figure they know, right? Even students, we've met with students, it's like they don't even know all the resources that are out there. So Carrie, did you want to maybe add a little bit more? Because you guys have been, you guys had a pretty good couple of meetings.
So to say that we're in the beginning stages of building the communication plan, I would say we're in the like pre-planning. You know, when you do the planning before you plan, that's the stage. And I think where what we know is true is that we actually need to just hear from youth about how we're doing. How are we fulfilling the Lakewood's promises specifically before we devise the communications plan? So we've kind of paused the actual like intricacies of who who is our audience and what do we actually need to tell them? And we're trying to understand just internally, how are we doing in fulfilling these promises and reaching out to kids directly?
Good. Thank you. I look forward then, I guess, to seeing, you know, because it's more than just translations. It's, you know, so that's the kinds of the things that I was looking for and that we'll look forward to seeing in the plan. And then, you know, if you're doing some things now, that kind of stuff is what I was curious about, but that's good. Thank you.
Mr. Brandon Center?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I certainly appreciate your being here. And while I always understood, you certainly present that you're committed to doing right by the young people of this community and looking to be able to go and do that in that youth recognize that they have a voice that needs to be listened to, goes on and on. I think in your comment about you needing to scan before you plan, as you're developing a communications plan. One thing that I'd ask you to look at is are the promises of twenty-five years ago the same promises we need to make to youth today? That and and are they worded? You know, we launched with Lakewood's Promise modeled on America's Promise project. We we are one of the communities in the country that embraced it most fully. We got recognized for this concipient number of years, which helped, which was a good tool for us to communicate with the community that that we were striving to be a community there where young people had opportunity and 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 were regarded and were able to go and do. But twenty-five years is a long time. And, you know, that I think that as you look at communicating the same five promises worded the way they are may not be what we need to be communicating. We need maybe need to look at what should the promises be? I don't have any real problem with any of this particular promises that we have. But there, but but maybe there is, maybe there should be six, and maybe they should be worded differently. And I'd ask you to look at it. And I think that's important because as a city, we're kind of looking at doing that in terms of our promises to the entire community. You know, we have city council adopted a vision for what Lakewood was moving forward to be. But the vision horizon is twenty twenty-six. You know, where we were, where do we want to be in twenty twenty-six? And we have got to be getting on with what is it going to look like in twenty thirty-six, okay, and having to make some decisions about that and and what what it looks, what the environment looks like for young people and the community's engagement with all of its generations is is an important element of the vision as as we go forward and look forward another ten years. And in twenty twenty-four is a significant upgrade of the comprehensive plan. So you know, I'd ask you to not be constrained by the five promises as they were put forward twenty-five years ago. The concept of making promises to young people and then keeping them, you know, is is the concept. The specific promises maybe are not necessary. And even if you keep the same five themes of promises, how they're worded is a is an element of communication. That the young people of today are not the, you know, they're they're the young people of twenty-five years ago were their parents. Okay. So yeah, yeah, yeah. So I'd ask you to look at that going forward as you as you as you develop a plan. I had one other comment about your presentation that I just wanted to ask. Because you you had two items here about overseeing the youth mental health initiatives and overseeing workforce development initiatives. You know, and oversee is an eighteenth-century word. Lots of kind of patient, but what really is what really is oversee mean in terms of your relationship with those initiatives?
Yeah, I think we are are kind of holding accountable the contractors that we're that are carrying out the work. And so both Josh Joshua Chambers and also Career Team kind of report back to the Lakewood's Promise Advisory Board. And then, and honestly, we get to ask questions, like we get to ask how is it going? How can we help? How can we better serve? How can we reach more families that that need their support?
You know, as the mayor commented earlier was we're always interested in how we're doing, particularly in how things that we invest in are doing. In in one of these is primarily an investment of the school district, the other is primarily an investment of the city. But, you know, in in the course of your work, being able to come back and not necessarily waiting till an annual meeting, but when is a good time to gather that is some combination of data and anecdotes is really helpful to us in terms of doing our work, because we constantly have things that we are trying to decide. Should we invest more in them? Should we keep investing in them at all? And when someone is a success but who has been being served by six different agencies and programs, you know, it's it's sometimes frustrating that all six claim that they're the reason for that person's success. And, you know, really kind of want to look at that, you know, they they all may have tangentially touched a a young person to be able to go and do that, but it's really trying to urge you to really look at what really is the the program that is the real catalyst that helps people get together. And and to these young folks here, you know, I really appreciate the fact that there are several different levels of years on the youth council that are engaged here and and able to provide some continuity to 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 this program. Because because you're because you're the most direct voice for your generation to in the city, to some people who are really attuned to listen and who are respected to the point of where what they recommend to do gets serious consideration. And to make it happen, be able to go and do that. So, you know, I thank you for your service, working as 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 liaisons here. And I think you know, this particular relationship process is one of the strengths of our community.
Agreed. I'm not going to let you off the hook too soon, though. I want to dig in a little bit about the the youth summit and the issue of of youth mental health. And so I want to pull a little bit out of you, what what the hopeful deliverables are going to be from your perspective? What do you hope to come out of that, that the youth that attend will will gain a sense of perspective about or from? And and the reason why I ask is, you know, we hear a lot about youth mental health in terms of the stress of school, the workload, anxiety. When I was interviewing the folks from the Daffodil Princess, saying it was all about the one thing that was interesting to me is to a T, they all said that social media is the bane of their existence, which is probably true. Now I hear about housing insecurity, right? So I really would hope, I'm not going to direct it to your show, right? But I would really hope that you folks dig in and help identify really what are the mental health challenges? Maybe you know, maybe you'll get more feedback, maybe you can get a little survey from all the participants as they come into that weekend or that program and figure out what it is. How do you name it to claim it, right? Is it is it stress of life? Is it overworked, you know, from homework? And I can tell you as a dad of three, I poo-poo the homework thing a little bit. Okay, that's just my perspective, because I was a kid. I've got three kids. We all have kids. We get it, but but there's more to it. It may be issues relating to family dynamics. And a kid feels that stress, right? And they own that to a certain extent. And it manifests itself through behaviors or academic performance or otherwise. It would be interesting to kind of get a handle on that as best you can and figure out strategies. You know, what's the deliverable you hope to accomplish? Is it going to be peer-to-peer counseling? Can we tell these crazy adults, we need to invest more resources in that because we think that would really be helpful? You know, so just think about it, you know, what what might be? There's not one root cause, there's not a root cause. There's a multi-headed Hydra of root causes for all of us. We all have mental health issues at one continuum or another in our lives. But I really hope we can come up with something really constructive for you out of this. Or at least you can be constructive with us and tell us what we need to help you with, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Right, yeah, I can absolutely touch on that. And Ali and Fatima, if you want to, if I'm missing anything, you can elaborate. But I think Shannon would also be great to talk to about this because she's the one who's in contact with all of our vendors.
Yeah.
But we'll really have to find, once you have a good set of vendors, what exactly we want to focus on, you know, because there are so many different avenues you could go down. It could be going down an avenue of advocacy, like you were talking about. It could be about peer-to-peer counseling. It could be about you know, teaching different methods of stress management. But I think you make a really good point that we're all about deliverable deliverables. You know, I think mental health and, you know, frankly, a lot of other terms in in the political space or in the advocacy advocacy space are talked about in like vague platitudes. Right? But we're really all about practical results. And sometimes that can be difficult to measure with mental health, but we want to teach students practical strategies about stress management, about you know, getting workload under control, about practicing healthy social media habits, about reaching out when you need help. And telling students where they can reach out, because someone touched on that earlier. A lot of kids don't know where to go for help.
Right.
You know, and that's a big problem in our schools. And so, yeah, we're we're looking, you know, we're running the show, but
I think you're on the path, though, Hank. I think it's a good thing, you know.
I think we are too. I would say I hope so.
Yeah.
But we'll have to find what what resources are available to us, who we can get in contact with. But we are really, really focused on providing a good learning experience to everyone who's in attendance.
You know, one thing your generation can do far better than ours is de-stigmatizing. De-stigmatizing mental health, right? You're going to do a lot of things better, I know. But de-stigmatizing, because all of us talk about physical health. We know what that means, right?
Right.
And I think sometimes people forget, at least in our generation, I'm speaking for me, that mental health can be as important as physical health. And if we can
Yes.
educate kids that it's okay. You know, and through your experience and the outcomes that you guys are going to work on, deliverables, maybe is the buzzword, right? But but just an outcome that it's okay to talk about it and okay to share about it. I mean, that would be an outcome that would be very positive.
I think no matter what we do, we are going to focus absolutely on breaking down cultural stigmas about mental health. That's one of our biggest priorities in councils since day one.
You know, and Ellie, when we were on CELT together, the Community Engagement Leadership Team, which just kind of vanquished a bit. The focus there was to not just address the needs of our students, but was also to address the needs of those parents of students. And how we as a community could wrap ourselves around, you know, providing the assistance and the help. And that seems to have kind of, you know, been put on the back burner. It may be something we need to kind of get back on the front burner and figure out how we best deal with and address. And maybe that's happening. I know Holly is involved in it dramatically in her role with Clover Park.
I just had a conversation today on that topic. Yeah, so.
We were on a good path and it kind of got derailed a little bit, but I think there's room for that. Maybe kickstart it again, because there's a component of youth, obviously, and families, and it's all interconnected. And I know Carrie, you're thick in thick in the middle of it, probably.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yes. Now, I have to say, we've had a youth council over the last couple of years that has been outstanding.
Yeah, they're really great.
And it's just a bright light that we've got young people that are.
You know, we started with the evening, and I'll turn you in a second, with the gala in honor of Claudia Thomas. Me, Mary and Mike and I served with Claudia. You weren't here yet, right, when she was here? She was a great mentor of mine and got me kind of kickstarted in this whole thing, as well with you, and I think with you as well. Great woman. She would be so proud. Know this. She would be, you know, greatly, so.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to co-sign what he said about the parents. Because that I actually had somebody talk to me this weekend saying I would really love to go and learn more, and I know that they've had these things. Could it be offered at multiple times of the day, different times of the week, things like that? So just being very accessible and opening up for those parents who, you know, can't get there because of work or work multiple jobs, things like that. Yes, language issues, all of that, I think would be wonderful. But the parent thing is huge also on there. And my child, that she's in the sixth grade, so this is very relevant to me. And I am listening very much. She goes to Harrison Prep also. So I hear a lot about that and just about things to help them cope a lot, which you talked about the stressors and how we deal with those, social media for sure. And then the diversity issues and addressing those types of things. Not just, not just things that have to do with cultural issues, but diversity and socioeconomic issues. People deal with so many different problems that not everybody's aware of, so just educating them on how to talk to your friends and be that good friend, be that good listener, things like that. And mentor each other, I think, is always a really great thing. And so I always talk to her just about listening and being a good friend and then coming back to the people that she knows that she trusts and can talk about with. So all of those kinds of things are really good. That it sounds like you're going to be addressing at the youth summit. So I think it's wonderful.
Be great. Any other points or questions? Do you guys have anything else for us? So speaking of continuity, yes, Mary?
As the liaison for the Promise Board, I would just share that the setting is very comfortable. And I think the students feel comfortable speaking up and telling us exactly what it is that they need. They don't have a problem with that. And we appreciate that. That's what we need to know. Yeah. And so the LMCC had a listening session at Lakes High School. And a lot came out of that. We have one scheduled for We have one scheduled for Hope Park Tech, of Hope Park High School coming up shortly. So what we do is we just listen to the students. They tell us what it is that they want, what they need. And it is different levels because, you know, everybody's at a different place. But I don't think there's a problem with them holding back if they have something they want to say. So we appreciate that. So thank you.
He's not going to hold back now. Hank?
I just wanted to ask Deputy Mayor, when will the LMCC Listening Session at Clover Park be?
We're waiting to get that information, the opportunity from the superintendent.
Okay. Do you anticipate ever holding one at Harrison Prep? Because we would love to have you there, too.
We'd love to.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Yeah, sounds good. Well, whoever you need to get in contact with, I would love to help you set that up. Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, my final question. This is potentially not a gift, but a gimme. Climate change, are youth interested in climate change? Here's the reason why I'm asking, because with my other hat on as President of Lakewood Rotary, we are looking to nominate a student to go to the Climate Change Youth Summit in Waukesha, Wisconsin, June 24th through June 30th. It's a freebie, transportation's paid by Lakewood Rotary, the hotel pieces pay, I think meals are included. We're looking for a student who's interested in leadership opportunities to go to this conference. So I plant that seed. And if one of you or you know somebody who's interested, please let me know. So I can let the Rotary Club know that we've got a qualified student who's interested and willing to take us up on this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity.
I can think of a few people who would be very interested in that. I know that the Youth Council is full to the brim of people who are eager for change.
Yeah.
You know, not just on climate change, but on issues that permeate all levels of society. As I mentioned earlier, our roundtable for the month of March will be focused solely on climate change and climate justice. And not just on how, you know, we can limit carbon emissions and installing solar panels on our rooftops. Although all of that is important, it's also about making sure that addressing climate change is done in an equitable way. You know, and how climate justice is inexplicably, if I'm saying that word correctly, inexplicably linked to climate change, right? And you have to ensure that the latter is taken care of before you can defeat the former. And so that's going to be a big priority for us going forward. And so I'm sure that you will have plenty of good options.
Let me know, you know how to get ahold of me, right? So.
Yes.
There are going to be delegates from over thirty nations. Youth kids, yeah.
Sorry, I was just gonna say pretty much what Hank was saying, how we have an upcoming roundtable where we were going to discuss climate change. So that is definitely like a topic, like spoken about, like within the youth community.
That's great.
And I think you, you shouldn't have a problem finding someone to fill that slot. I think it's just about like letting them know, so they're aware of this opportunity.
Well, I'm passing on through you leaders, so let me know. Sooner the better, if I can get a name forward, yeah, Mary?
Yeah, yeah.
I will do that, yeah, because we're just chewing on that now in Rotary and they're bugging me as a president to come up with a name. And I've talked to a few kids and I think it would be a great opportunity since it's all expense paid. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, are you asking the Youth Council similar to some other things to provide you a name? Or are you looking for a long list of candidates that you will sort through?
Well, if we get more than one, it would be awesome to sort through. But I'll, I'll have Ms. Dodsworth kind of carry this out through your group there, because I think it would be great. Yeah, I have no idea where this is, Mike, you probably know.
Well, you, you remember Waukesha was the place where there was a car that killed all the grandmothers during the Christmas parade.
Oh, goodness sakes, got it, okay. It's a Carroll, it's going to take place at Carroll University. Well, that's not the best claim to fame, but yeah, there's probably some other positive things about Waukesha. Yeah, Carroll University is where it's going to be held, Ms. Dodsworth. And so it should be really, I'll send you the information, it should be fantastic, so. Anyway, more to follow on that. And the last thing, speaking of Rotary, is I, I told them that following your youth conference and your summit about mental health, that it would be, and the adults would find it invaluable to have maybe a program where you guys have a panel to discuss the outcomes on youth mental health from the summit. So sometime maybe lateish May, when the count, the summit is when? Yours is June 10th? So maybe either after that, I know it's busy because you guys are getting rid of, you're going to be done with school at that point. So maybe in the fall, we can come up with a date that might work and you guys can leave the baton on that. But the, the adults are really interested, you know, in what you guys have to say. So coming out of the Youth Summit, perhaps with a, a adult or two from Lakewood's Promise to sit on that little panel and having a couple of youth speakers, it would really be powerful. So think about that, yeah.
If I could add back to that opportunity you have with climate change, I feel like you, I feel like, because we were talking about in general about how like opportunities need to be made known and like things that are available need to be known. I feel like if you put that out there for like people to see, you'd have a lot of people that are interested because climate change is so like big within our generation. I just think we have to like make these opportunities more known for people, like more widespread.
Yeah, really good point. Well, and that's hopefully, I mean, this is a good communication flow. I get, you know, Ms. Dodsworth tells us the best way to communicate that. Is it through Lakewood's Promise? Is it through the school district directly? I mean, how, we'll figure it out, yeah. This and other opportunities. Yep. Right. June 24th. Yeah. Right. No, it's actually, it's June, this is why it's always been a challenge with local kids, because they're out of school. And so they're so focused on stuff, but the juniors might not be, though, they might be, I'm in. It's June 24th through Friday, June 30th. So Saturday, the 24th of June through Friday, June 30th at Carroll University, Waukesha, Wisconsin. They don't pay for it. I mean, the Rotary Club pays for the youth. I know you're talking about the adult, but I think the whole purpose is it's kids going to this thing where there's lots of leadership. I'll send you the information so you're comfortable with it, but yeah. Yeah. We'll get there, I'll get the information to Ms. Dodsworth. Yeah. Yeah. Heck, my parents put me on a bike on a ferry in Alaska to a Parks and Rec thing in fifth grade and said, go forward. Yeah, have fun, watch out for bears. Thanks, guys. Great to see you as always, and we really appreciate your participation and support. And good to see you folks as well, and thank you for your help. So. Yeah, good seeing you, yeah. All right. Well, tonight we have our interim police chief, John Unford, to give us a review of the fourth quarter police statistics. Chief Unford. All right, got my technology working? Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. And I am here to present our fourth quarter crime statistics, which overall we're, we're looking pretty good. Calls for service, we're down a little bit, arrests across the board, we're, we're slightly up. Sort of dovetail into the last presentation. One trend that we are watching that is a little bit concerning is the increase in juvenile arrests. The first three quarters, we averaged two and a half percent of our arrests were juveniles. The last quarter was six percent. That's sort of a national trend. We don't know, Raymond Hall sort of loosened up booking restrictions partway through last year. So that may be a piece of it, or it may just be part of a larger trend. But just sort of underscores the importance of everything that we do for our youth out there because we are seeing more and more juvenile crime. So here's our numbers. The aggravated assaults are up slightly, about sixteen percent. Most other columns are down, other than the motor vehicle theft. Year-to-date from 2022 is up fifty-four, fifty-four percent. And from third quarter to fourth quarter is up fifty-six percent. So we took a pretty big jump just in the last quarter, but overall, the entire year was up. These are our charts. That red line shows the percent of population. And then each column is the district and the amount of crime in that district. So person crime, for instance, you can see District Five is twenty-seven percent of the population, but only had fourteen percent of the person crime. Across the board, you can see District Four is our largest district by, by crime. It's also where the most people are, it's our central district here with most of our business areas. Otherwise, our Niggers person crime is actually down to below first quarter 2019 levels. For the, the year, we averaged three hundred and ninety-two crimes per quarter. So looking at this chart, we're, we're actually, and we've been flatlining the last three quarters of the year. So our person crimes is, is holding. Property crimes, you noticed we had a big jump there in 2021 and it came down. And then a tick up here right in fourth quarter. That is almost entirely motor vehicle theft. If you were subtract, there were a hundred, there's a hundred and seven difference. So if you were to take out that motor vehicle theft, we would actually be closer to our third quarter numbers. Theft or larceny was actually down eight percent for the year and six percent in the fourth quarter. So if theft is down, the property crime is up, that's, that's really the result of the motor vehicle thefts. Society crimes, so this is drug possession, prostitution, drug sale, gambling, those types of crimes. And you can really see it kind of flatlined after the Blake decision and, and really hasn't gone up. So that's, again, that's the criminal side and, and the issue of society crimes is really self-driven. It depends on how much we put into the enforcement versus just about all the other crimes where we're reactive to victims calling. So overall, again, our total crime at a, a big peak, fourth quarter 2021, we're up one point nine percent year-to-date. But again, if you subtract out the, the motor vehicle thefts, we're actually down below third quarter. And then here's our total crime, fourth quarter, going back to 2016. So you can see we're up at sixty-nine hundred. It's a little bit higher, it's been climbing the last couple of years, not significantly, but slightly. And again, the, the motor vehicle thefts, about triple our, our normal average. If you subtract those out, we'd be back down to about 2016 rates. And then our crimes against persons, again, we had a dip in the, in the fourth quarter. And it's really been pretty flat going all the way back to 2016. And then our property crimes, really had a dip down in 2019. And then there's been a slow steady increase since then. Chief, can you explain any of that as related to the changes in the legislative or legislative changes in the law in pursuits? Do we believe that the increase in property crime is directly attributed to that? Or is it part of that or what? I think it's a little bit early, but I think that there's a, if you look at these numbers and this trend and then, and it's not just the, the vehicle thefts, but the Blake decision and, and then the, the property crime, we know that drugs typically fuel the property crime, drug use is a, is a big driver of that, both the regular property crime and the, the vehicle thefts. So that is certainly a strong theory and, and this chart would, would back that up. I think it's going to take a little bit more research to, to draw that link. And I'll, I'll talk a little bit more about that. Okay, just a second. So again, this is our crimes against society. These are the, the fourth quarter numbers going back to 2016. So you can see that drop and then really that Blake decision in 2021, and it really bottomed out. Our accidents started to tick up again the last two or three quarters. And this is sort of a trend that we're, we're seeing nationally. Traffic deaths are up eleven percent for 21 and 22 nationwide. So it's kind of a national trend in terms of vehicle accidents and, and. I'm going to skip that last slide for just half a second. I probably should have put these under different order, but I will come back to it. This chart here is our CAD, so it's any shots fired or shootings. And we're seeing a lot of just shots fired, just randomly. Sometimes there's a, a house or something targeted, sometimes it's a road rage. Sometimes it's just somebody at the park or out on the street, you know, shooting randomly. Sometimes it's a shooting, but you can see the trend line going up. And so that's been concerning, we've been watching, I've been watching that closely since 2018, which isn't even on this chart, and we've exceeded that. So as we reinvigorate our special operations unit, firearms crime will be one of their top priorities. We are doing a good job, we collect the casings from all of these events, we submit them to the crime lab. We're getting hits where they're linking to other cases from Tacoma County, as far away as Oregon, Seattle. We just don't have the investigative resources to really, you know, follow those up. So hopefully, as we reinvigorate special operations, that they, that's one of the things that I've tasked them with is to work on all firearms crimes. Then I'll go back. So this is our motor vehicle theft stats. So you can see, pre-COVID, really, we were between about sixty and eighty per quarter. And then during COVID, post-COVID, we were up around a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and thirty. And then right between the, the one thirteen and the one thirty-four is where House Bill 1054 took effect. And then you see a significant climb to numbers that I don't think we've ever seen. We had a drop in third quarter and then fourth quarter, we were back up almost double again. Thirty-five percent of the motor vehicle thefts in fourth quarter were Kias and Hyundai's. There's a TikTok videos of flaw in their system that it was easy to, to steal. So that's been the big thing. In the county, we've seen, you know, entire crime sprees built around that. They'll steal a Kia, go do an armed robbery, they'll ditch it, they'll steal another one, they'll ditch that and they'll steal another one. They'll be on the third, fourth one and we're, you know, trying to track behind them. And it makes it very difficult to track for a criminal. You may have seen Kent announced, and we're, we're part of that program, beat us to the punch. The Puget Sound Auto Theft Task Force is getting a thousand clubs from both Kia and Hyundai, so two thousand total. We will get a portion of those and then we will distribute those through the police station to owners of Kias and Hyundai's in Lakewood. So going back to eighties technology, but the club, but it works. Big bar that locks into your steering wheel and then it has one end that's got a rubber coating. So if you turn it, it's the windshield and so you immobilize it. Yeah, yeah, way, way back in the day. So this is a chart that you may have seen. We were one of the few departments that, maybe the only department that collected this data. So after ten, House Bill 1054, we had all of our officers write reports every time a vehicle eluded them. So took off and they were not able to, to pursue them. And so you can see our, our numbers here, this has been. And so you can see our our numbers here, uh, this has been distributed fairly widely, just because we we do. Are one of the few people with the data, so uh three hundred and twenty eludes uh last year alone. Um, and then you can see the the bottom line, the dark line, is the number of pursuits. So prior to uh ten fifty-four, we were between three to six pursuits a month, now we're between two to three. Uh, so it didn't have a dra- dramatic impact on the number of pursuits that we uh initiate, but you can see obviously the number of eludes. Uh, city manager had our uh Assistant City Manager, Finance Director pull our ten-year loss report from WCIA. And so in the last ten years, we've had a total of fourteen claims uh based on pursuits. Twelve of those had no payout, uh, one of them paid out a few hundred dollars and then we had one for for three hundred and twenty thousand. So out of uh ten years, really had one significant claim. Claim for, I'm sorry, for. For damages.
From a pursuit?
Correct.
Can I ask a question here for a minute?
Sure.
So in the TNT this last weekend, there was an op-ed written by our twenty-ninth Legislative District Representative. Charlotte Mina. And I'd like to address it at some point or get some information either back to her because she publishes. Uh, this op-ed about the importance of maintaining a statewide standard for pursuits. In other words, not supportive of House Bill thirteen sixty-three that I went down to testify in favor of. And she cites in here. Uh, she goes, the stories we share are not just anecdotes, a Pierce County audit on police pursuits highlights the continuing and significant concerns. About the ways that police pursuits were carried out prior to changes in state law in Lakewood. More pursuits resulted in crashes, thirty-eight percent, than in arrests, thirty-five percent, and nine percent resulted in injuries. And she goes on in this article to say eleven percent of the six hundred and forty-four pursuits of Pierce County Sheriff's Office took part and resulted in injuries from two thousand seventeen to twenty-one. I'm curious as to whether or not that data is supportable or not, or where she's getting that. Because I said we would provide whatever it would take for her to feel comfortable in supporting the bill from Lakewood. And I'm not sure where she's getting this information because it's contrary to what I received when I went to support and testify in favor of the bill. What do you know about that?
So what I know in uh reading that, I saw that op-ed as well, um. I think they're getting their data from the report from the the Audit Office for the Pierce County. Uh, there's a policy analyst who submitted a public disclosure request for all of our incident reports for pursuits going back a number of years. And I haven't had time to balance our internal numbers with with those. Um, but I have strong concerns about those numbers. I do, because I think anybody, I really just didn't go down the rabbit hole because. In some ways, it's it's slightly relevant because everyone's getting twisted around numbers and. In reality, I mean, the the data says it's very short, we only have about a year and a half since ten fifty-four, it's a small data set. Uh, only a couple of departments have kept the data that we have with the eludes. Uh, reading that audit at at first glance, they are conflating pursuits with the eludes. So lewd is they take off, the officer doesn't chase them, pursued is the officer actively engages in a pursuit to apprehend them. They're sort of intermixing those numbers. Uh, the policy analysts, again, took all of our incident reports, but if you don't, if you aren't familiar with those and how the cases are cleared. So if you look at whether it's it was cleared with an arrest or not, you really have to know uh the data. Anybody that works with that is the devil, devil's in the details, so I have questions myself about the methodology. And the the data they got was are the police reports, but if you don't analyze those properly and know that. Uh, so that's where they're getting the numbers and I have questions about those numbers, um.
I'd like to look at it because I see the headline as you did, that says, don't believe the smears. A fact-based police pursuit law makes Washington safer. And I, you know, I want to make sure that she's getting the right data, at least from us, which is a jurisdiction that she supposedly represents. So I want to make sure that it's accurate as best we can, right, Mr. Boki?
Yeah, I spoke to that analyst today, actually. And um, and he is available to speak, I don't know that he'd come publicly, but we we, if someone wants to call him, he is available to speak. His, first of all, the chief is right, Lakewood is one of the only who is one of. Very few jurisdictions that actually keeps track.
Right.
Of this information, so um, that's number one. Number, and number two, his words to me were, the numbers were cherry-picked. They they pulled it from.
In the Pierce Audit, Pierce County Audit?
Whoever wrote the.
Article?
The article. Cherry-picked numbers and he said something along the lines of it being like. Like back in the footnotes, they took something from something and conflated that into something else, so. It it's it's, first of all, there's not a huge data set, second of all, the conclusion that. The Senator was drawing, or whoever wrote that for Representative, um, was was uh the representative, excuse me. I I think there's more to that, to draw a conclusion from that information like she did is is probably not correct, is what I'm being told.
Well, opinions are opinions, we all can have them, uh, but it would be nice to have opinions based on facts, so to the extent. And I'm I'm just going on this a little bit because I'm personally and professionally irritated that she didn't ask us for information before she wrote an article. That included our data. Um, but to the extent the data is not accurate or doesn't tell the full story, it would be nice, you know, chat with Mr. Coffield about it. At least getting some information back to her uh from our perspective, we can't. Opine about everyone else's data because we don't control everyone else's data, we just control our own. And I want to correct the record if the record needs to be corrected.
Absolutely, we can do that, um, Mr. Anderson.
Yeah, just a comment on that, I think we need to uh release our own rebuttal. Uh, this is gonna become a partisan election issue. And the people who are putting out this, what will turn out to be a cookie cutter editorial, have a vested interest in admitting. Or failing to admit that they were wrong.
Right.
So so you can supply them with the facts, but they, that really doesn't make any difference. Because they have a political motivation to ignore those facts, uh, we didn't make a mistake, it's not our fault, reelect us. Um, so uh, I think we need to re, we we need to establish a fact-based rebuttal. And see if we can uh publicize that, that that, but I did have a question for uh. Assistant Chief, I'm Fred here on, uh, do we have any? Uh, I I doubt that there's any broad statewide information on this, but do we have any? Uh, even anecdotal information with respect to how many of these stolen cars? Uh, rides terminate in a collision. Are they recovered from collisions, whether it's in use in a crime or um an elude or whatever? Uh, it it seems from news reports that, you know, that people are committing crimes with these stolen cars, we know that. But it seems a lot of them end up crashed and people get hurt, uh, even if it's a perpetrator. Do we have any any information on that?
I do not have uh firm stats. I know that we, the shift recaps, um, yeah, it is anecdotally uh fairly prevalent. Uh, but I should be able to pull that number um as part of going back and and pulling our data on this.
You know, one of the arguments uh that the proponents of allowing criminals to run away with impunity. Make is, of course, that uh this avoids collisions and if they end up crashing the car somewhere else. Just because they're speeding, passing me on the freeway without license plates or whatever, uh. I I don't think that that the debt number is gonna be too favorable.
No, I I certainly agree, it's it's not gonna be safer uh merely to to let them go.
Um, I I didn't mean to derail you on the report.
No, no, absolutely.
Topic of interest, it's, that's why we're here.
Yeah. Um, I'm pretty much done, uh, anyways, uh, I will, um. When I have a little bit more time, because I just saw that op-ed late last week, so I will pull our our, pull our numbers. Um, because I think they are gonna be different, um, but uh we should have our own numbers out there. Uh, the last thing I'll leave you with is, so this slide um shows the the blue line is the number of eludes. And then the red line is the number of arrests that we have been able to make for eluding. So, and our numbers are probably higher than some departments because we've actually been doing a few emphasis. Where we get the air support airplane or helicopter and undercover cars, and then when they take off, the march cars drop off. And then we follow them and and arrest them later. Um, so there has been one uh suggestion that, oh, we just arrest them later. Um, that is not gonna work, um, because you can see in with these numbers, and if somebody takes off, it's in a stolen car or. Um, you know, we're not gonna be able to track that to anybody, if, even if I have a license plate, I have to show and prove in court. That it was a specific person driving that vehicle at the time that I saw them, never gonna be able to do that if I follow up later after the fact. Uh, not to mention if it was used in a violent crime or a homicide or a shooting, gives them a chance to to get away, so. Uh, so that's really a a myth. Um, it is a small data set, I think logically, you can look at the stats that I showed in the trend, the timeline. For when our MBTRs um almost tripled what our normal average was.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, to the initiation of law, our eludes have gone up. Um, correlation is not causation, I think there needs to be more study and data collection. Like you said, we're one of the few departments that is collecting this data, but I do know that we're not safer because of that.
Right.
And um, it has led to increased eluding and and MBTRs. Um, and to your point, I think, uh, you know, good public policy should be based on data and not creating policy and then finding data after. So throwing out numbers at this point, um, is really putting the cart behind the horse or in front of the horse.
Well, we certainly want to provide factual data from our perspective as best we can, right, because that does inform better public policy.
Correct.
I don't want to be accused like the author of the article in the statement, we continue to hear a false narrative meant to instill fear. And provide a simple solution to a complex problem, that's not what we're about, we're about data. And public policy based on the best data we can find or have, right?
Right, and that's exactly why we collected that data, uh, it was extra work for the officers, they have to write a report every single time that happens, three hundred and twenty last year. Um, but it's important so that we can drive this discussion and I'm.
Absolutely.
I wish other agencies had done it so we had a broader data set. Yep, but I will come back with um our firm numbers and I'll try to find the uh number of stolen vehicle recoveries. That involve an accident.
It'd be great, Mr. Boki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, chief, just a a few questions, the the theme of the night or earlier in the night was behavioral health. We have the Behavioral Health Contact Team, we added another position. In the budget, I think, so we should have two people, what what is the status of the Behavioral Health Contact Team right now?
Well, we uh, we went down to. We were just at the second mental health professional position and we had one mental health uh professional, but we didn't have an MPO, neighborhood police officer. But with them, we just got the staffing back up and we got the MPO and our mental health professional resigned and took a job somewhere else. So right now, we have the MPO, but no mental health professional. Uh, Greater Lakes Multi Care tells me that they're close to potentially hiring somebody and they're out recruiting heavily. Uh, they're offering a signing bonus, five thousand dollar signing bonus, mental health professionals, um, it is a tough market right now. They are in demand and there's not a lot of them around, so right now, we currently do not have uh new mental health professional. We still have access to Multi Care system and some of the other coresponders, um, and a DCR, designated crisis responder. Um, like we would normally, but that's on-call, it's not working embedded in ours.
And that's with the MRT or whatever, and then, and then. Does M-Cert from Central Pierce come in to town to help you guys at all? That would be the closest thing to uh our person.
Yeah, um, we haven't really gone down that rope because we haven't needed to.
Okay.
Uh, but we also have West Pierce has their cares, which is a a nurse, um, that does follow up. Uh, not necessarily mental health, but a lot of times there's a, there's an intersection there, um, so we're relying on whatever resource we can. But we at least have the the MPO who is able to make contact and track and reach out and pull in other resources, so it's still effective. It's just, we don't have them right on on hand.
And what do we do for the mental health of the officers?
Um, we've done a lot in in the last few years, uh, we have a contract therapist. Um, who's on contract, she comes in, she trains our peer support team and then she trains officers uh once or twice a year. And then uh she will do an initial assessment in the officer for free, and then after that. Um, they'll work out um either on private insurance, uh, or she can refer them uh to somewhere in uh. And that can work through our EAP with uh officers' um medical insurance. Or could potentially go through L and I, depending on which which path they want to go. Uh, we have your support team, a fairly robust one, and that is uh officers that are trained and granted confidentiality. Under state law, which is incredibly important, um, so that an officer can confide in another officer and be granted the same confidentiality. That a therapist or doctor would, uh, and and they have special training on how to, they're not therapists, obviously, but they have training on just how to. Um, talk to officers and then kind of refer them to other resources. Uh, we still have two chaplains available, and then we have taken a a holistic approach, so we brought in. Uh, last year, we did a uh diet and nutrition with um a uh nurse practitioner. And then um we do a fitness challenge every year where the winning squad gets a day off and the command staff works their shift for them, so. Last year, we drew the unlucky straw working graveyard, but it was fun.
We had a lot of motivation.
Yeah.
I saw the other day, and I don't want to go too long, if I may, the the other day that. And I I get, you know, so excited when I hear on the news, you know, oh, they they made a bust out in Spanaway or something. Eleven cars, two people drove away, they did arrest a few people, but several just got in their stolen cars and drove off. And um, is that part of the auto theft task force? Do do we have cars and every time when those kind of things happen, usually if it's out in the county or? Is it, is it uh? Are we involved in stuff like that, or is that?
We are, so we have a sergeant and a detective on the Puget Sound Auto Theft Task Force, which is South King County and Pierce County. Um, it's a joint multi-agency, uh, so our sergeant is actually one of the, there's two sergeants on it that help manage it. And so they very often do cases um out in in Pierce County that very likely could have been uh that task force, but. They really try to go after the big fish, so the people, the rings, they're doing, you know, multiple thefts versus just the. Um, there's kind of different paths people to go through into motor vehicle thefts, a lot of them are just joyrides, some of them are to commit other crimes. Some of them are to steal parts, catalytic converters, um, part them out and that kind of thing, and and those are the ones that had the biggest impact. Um, so that's really where the theft task force goes after, but yes, we are part of that, thank you. Ms. Bell and then Mr. Branstad.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so how is the retail theft program going when you guys go into stores? And how is that all looking altogether?
Um, good, I actually wish I brought the stats uh with me tonight because we're gonna put it in the annual report. It'll be released soon, in the next few weeks, but uh I think we did six or eight emphasis here. And not, I mean, in the grand scheme of things, not a ton of arrests or recovered property, but it's significant. In that it's sending a message that, um, you know, we are gonna hold people accountable for um stealing from our businesses. Um, and I think it it has been effective, and if you look, you know, our theft numbers were down eight percent overall. So I attribute um at least part of that to that program.
Mr. Branstad?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, chief, um, a year ago, Chief Zaro gave us the fourth quarter report. That was for twenty twenty-one and in crimes against society. He noted that there was a big drop, almost a fifty percent drop from twenty twenty. And that was attributed almost entirely.
And that was attributed almost entirely to the, um. Lack of drug arrests because of the action of the Supreme Court that essentially. We went into a period of time and went for many drug offenses. There was no longer a law that was enforceable. And we're, um, and, and I, I noticed that this year we're still. In a trend of even fewer drug arrests. But, um, other sources of data. Speak to us about. The drug problem in the society and in the community is actually moving in the other direction. That, uh, you know, you know, whether it's, it's overdoses or, uh, just, just doing those sorts of things. And as a console, um, we're looking at. Following the lead of some other cities of looking to replace a void in the state law level. With considering whether we should create a municipal ordinance that relates to. Drug possession or use in public of being able to go in, 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 and do that. And is, uh, first of all, is that? A, a right read that the significant decline in drug cases shown in your data is. Result of that certain categories of drug things are just not illegal anymore. And, um. If we were to make, uh, if, if, if the city council were to move forward with. Creating a municipal ordinance that would cause public drug use or whatever of, of something to that. Is, is that something that the department has the wherewithal to respond to that would? Show a spike in these numbers, um, uh, with the idea that that would be a good thing? Or is that going to be a, a task that? They don't necessarily have the resources to put an emphasis on if we were to pass an ordinance like that.
Uh, yeah, so a couple of different angles to your, uh, to my response. Number one, yes, that is, uh, as a result of the, the Blake decision and then the legislative change after that. So, uh, Blake decision tossed out all, uh, possession crimes. And then the, the new, the legislative fix to that was that you could, um, charge someone with possession, but it was only a misdemeanor. And only upon the third contact, we had to show that they were referred to drug treatment on two occasions. Before we can make an arrest and then it was only a misdemeanor. So, uh, and if the legislature doesn't do anything this session in July, then it completely goes away. So, uh, the, so that's why the numbers have dropped. Because it's really impractical to make an arrest for their simple possession. We can for dealing, that's still illegal distribution. But, um, so there's a couple of things at play right now, uh, particularly in the legislature. There are a couple of different bills picking different tax at that. And essentially what both of them are honing in on is some sort of drug court or diversion in municipal court for drug crimes. Um, I don't think anyone believes that, um, jailing people out of this is the, is the right way. But it's a, it's a tool to, to bring people into that, uh, pathway. And that's what we're lacking right now because, uh, most people are not going to go into that pathway without some, some urging. The, and I don't want to get too far down the road because I know it's, um, city attorney's office is going to be presenting, um, municipal code. But it is a tool that we can use as a police department again to get somebody into that pathway. We don't have a drug court yet in municipal court, but at least coming out of the jail and, and the squally. They're at least married up with, um, and not just throwing a pamphlet. They actually will take them to, um, substance use, um. Provider and try to engage them with, you know, services. Um, so it's at least an attempt. So this would be another tool. And if nothing else, it keeps people from being able to do it in parks, near playgrounds, schools. That type of thing out in the open. You know, what, what people do on their own, um, but they shouldn't be around our kids, uh, doing that kind of thing. Um, and then another piece that you touched on is the, the overdose, the fentanyls, the fentanyl overdoses are absolutely through the roof. So we are losing, I have never, ever seen so many overdose deaths. I mean, it's, it's almost weekly, uh, here, if not more. And so if we don't take some kind of action, we're, we are losing young people in their twenties and thirties to overdose.
Okay. If I, um, were to, uh, to, to, to look at that, do you have any, uh? Or if you could look, maybe you don't have it here, but if you could look, there, there are some municipalities in the region that have already adopted some local. Municipal code changes and if you could. Touch base with them to see, is it having an impact that they wanted to make? Having been given that tool, it'd be helpful to us to know.
If I may, Councilmember Branstad, that matter is coming before this council on March thirteenth and we will include in our review with the council. The jurisdictions we looked at and the impacts they're seeing, if any, they're fairly fresh in those jurisdictions, but we can try and get some feedback.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No, thank you. And, uh, like I said, I will, uh, get back to you with those stats. Appreciate that. Thank you. Well, very good. Now we're going to, um. Direct our attention, I should say, direct, refer, wayfind our attention to Park Signs Reader Board and Wayfinding Signs update. With our Parks Rec and Community Services Director, Mary Doddworth.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council members. I'm excited to come share with you an update to our park sign project. Um, as you recall, we presented some options and council gave us some direction to get additional information. We were lucky enough to have you support hiring a consultant in twenty twenty-two to work on the park sign monument sign project. Um, so we put together a stakeholders group to help us work through that process and to work with the consultant. And, and so the stakeholder was a great group of folks coming from different directions. We had communications and economic development, public works engineering from, you know, design and installation in and around right of ways. We had park board represented and then of course, um, maintenance and capital projects within the parks. So we had, um, a couple of, we had kickoff meetings and stakeholder meetings. And little did we know how amazing this group was going to be because they started talking about all of the issues in the city. That, um, that we have regarding not just signage, but you know, how do you get from here to there? As you recall, uh, the company that we hired, Tangram, the principal is from Lakewood and he lives in Colorado now. So coming in and out of town over the years, um, over the last twenty years, he was just talking about, you know, how challenging it can be. New staff, we're talking about how challenging it can be to get from here to there and don't even try and go into Oakbrook because you'll never get out. So, um, anyway, so there's a lot of conversation and just as part of the development of the sign project, the, uh, people started talking about. Uh, projects that they had either in the queue, like the reader board project. Or projects that were in work programs such as vehicular wayfinding. And then of course, we're always interested in the pedestrian experience in and around town. As well as some opportunities for economic impact, working with tourism and local businesses. So, um, we, uh. Worked with the stakeholder group and the consultant to come up with a scope of work that would address so many of these different topics. It could really be addressed concurrently. We wanted to make sure we were looking at a family of signs. They didn't have to all be exactly the same, but you could tell and know that they came from the city of Lakewood. There'd be consistency. We wanted to take a look at, um, how to address that you could, it, it's not just a one stop shop. How to address the vehicular getting from here to there, how to talk about our downtown areas or our historic areas. Looking at wayfinding within the parks. So what you have, um, in front of you tonight is an expanded scope of services. We divide them into four different areas so we could take a look at them in individually as well as how they would work. Together. Council could take a look at, um, an interest in doing all of them, or if they felt like they, they wanted to phase it. You could take a look at that as well, but really the four different areas that we're looking at are a citywide, uh, wayfinding master plan. To really look citywide comprehensively and not Band-Aids here and there. Uh, to look at the park wayfinding, we already had the resources for the park signs, so that wasn't included in this. But to talk about the wayfinding within our park system, we, you know, especially even Fort Silicon Park, you've got all these different elements. We find folks that, you know, they've only been there for soccer. We didn't even know there was a lake back there. You know, we're, we're going to the dog park and we didn't even know about, you know, some different things. So it's a way of doing some wayfinding throughout our park system. And we included the new entry. We talked about this at a study session, the new entry at Port Silicon Park, the traffic roundabout that will be put in. And how that's going to significantly change the entry experience. And so how we might take advantage of this expertise to help us really design that properly. We're also looking at a downtown corridor wayfinding program. And that is again, working on, look, looking in our downtown area with our local businesses, how you come and go and how people know where to go. And then of course, the communications and the electronic reader board. So it's a four, um, there's four different projects associated with, uh, this expansion. The, um, it's a full package of services. So Tangram is the firm and they're, they have the capacity to do this work. And that we're looking at not just, um, design, but we'd be looking at, uh, location plans, a master plan. Not just what we have, but where the appropriate place to put them is. A vehicular sign is going to be put in place differently than a pedestrian sign. So we want to make sure we're really looking at that from a variety of ways. We would also be having, uh, landscaping recommendations for different areas of signs that needed that. There would be a location plan, as I noted, and also cost estimating and help with actually getting these put into place. The exciting part, part is that this would be a plan that would be implementable. Right away. It's not just going to be a plan that we create and then put on a shelf and come back to. We already have funds in the budget for the reader board, so this would be able to be implemented after it was done. We have funds in our, um, for the park monument, monument signs in our capital program. You know, public works engineering can build the cost of these signs into their construction projects. If they put them on the front side, they have that information. And then, um, working on the, um, business district historic areas, we bringing different partners together. That isn't a project that's fully funded at this point, an implementation plan anyway, but, but there's lots of different partners that can come together to help with that. So, uh, that would be coming forward as well. So if, um, I have the, the, um, scope laid out in a manner that I think is easy to follow. So if you have a question regarding any one of the elements, or if you decide this is the greatest project you've ever seen. We can have concurrence. We can put it on your next council agenda for approval.
Mr. Branstad.
Pretty extensive package going from replacing the monument signs in the parks to all of this. All of it isn't new. Um, certainly the communications folks have brought to us the fact that, uh. And we, in the council, we've kind of agreed that we want to acquire reader boards and you, and add that into our communication strategy mix. To be able to go and, and, and do that. And that seems very different from all the other signs that are being talked about because the other ones are all fixed message signs. If I can call them that, I mean, they're going to say something and it's going to say that. For forever to, to do that. And I, I thought we were. Actually quite a ways down the road because this, this amount here isn't. To acquire the rear board. We've already done the acquire reader board and said we're going to have that. That funding available to do that. So I'm not sure why. That has to be concluded in a, this consultant contract package. That, and, and that it can't be something that our in-house communications team, which we've, we, we expanded and then being able to do that. Can go on, given that the, 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 the reader board is really a communications tool, not a signage. Fixed message tool to do that. The other. Part of this that was. Not clear to me had to do with the town, down city, the downtown project. Uh, downtown corridor, wayfinding signage and programming. And, uh. So I understood about the fact that they were going to take a look at what signs were needed and where they would tell people to go and what they, they were doing. And then in programming, it says message schedule and location plan. And that makes it sound like it's not. Come up with a plan of a set of signs to put in the downtown for wayfinding, but a constantly changing. Set of signs with, with changing messaging. Cause it's just, it's just message schedule, uh, and I don't know what that. That doesn't sound like a signage plan to me. Um, and I wonder why, why that's in the scope and of something we would pay for.
Sure. Um, I'll address the communications, the, the reader board sign first, just to clarify. We have budgeted for reader board signs, two reader board signs. But, um, I think if we just ordered two from a box and put them somewhere in the city where there's a lot of car traffic, I don't, that's not necessarily going to meet our needs. I think what we want to do is have it be strategically, um, thought about in the manner of what they look like. What are the current trends? What do you get that you can utilize the frame, but maybe change the guts as. Uh, technology improves and changes. Where really is the right place for them? Or is it a low? Is it a high, um, sign? And so the idea isn't just to buy a couple from a box. We did that when the police station was built and we stuck it on the corner and it's worked fine for a while. But the idea is to also include whatever we come up with that possibly replace that one. So again, it's this family of signs that we're looking for so that when you look at them and see them, you know, this is a city of Lakewood. Informational sign. And, um, the communications team understands that's their role to, to manage that, um, project. But they needed support. They kind of came up with, here's some transportation numbers and here's where it could be. But there's so much more that needs to happen to make it really be, um. Make, make it work, so to speak. So that's why there was elements of design, location, communication. The technology of researching, um, what those signage opportunities are. And how that can come together comprehensively with all the other things that we're doing. So, so there's more to it than, um. That maybe initially thought. And so that's, that's why that was included in that way. And again, it was a need that came out from the direction of, we have this project to do, let's do it right. Following up on the downtown corridor and wayfinding, that is a project that our economic development department has been working on for quite some time. I'll just start off with, we have over eight thousand signs in the city. We're not interested in adding more signs that just, just to add signs. In fact, hopefully we can remove some signs because they've been installed over the last twenty-five years. This one's blue and this one's brown and this one's square and this one's rectangular. This one's hanging high and lighted and this one's low. This one is on an old pole and it tilts and the other one. So we have lots of signs in the city. So we're really looking at again, taking a look citywide. How, when you get to the, from the freeway coming into the city of Lakewood, how, where do you go? And where, and how do you get there? And so this particular area is really looking at. What we hope to be a downtown area, core area with historic areas and shopping opportunities and, and other kinds of things. And really to take a look at again, a comprehensive way of getting from here to there. We're not going to say, um, when you get off the freeway, we have a Red Robin. Turn left and you'll go to the Red Robin. If you circle around behind the bank, you'll get to the Red Robin. That's not really what we're hoping for. It's really something more about. Um, here's where you go in the city of Lakewood for shopping. Here's where you can go for food, you know, things like that. The message isn't a changing message. We're not looking at that. Um, I think it's just the terminology that they're using. We're looking at a comprehensive plan of where should they be? We have all these new traffic circles or roundabouts, I call them the wrong thing, but we have all of the, you know, different ways of coming and going. Where's the right place for information to be? I mean, we know that, um, people come into town and they don't know where. people come into town and they don't know where to go or how to get from here to there. And everybody has GPS and we get that, but but what's the experience? And really, what are they thinking and feeling when they get through town? So you mentioned something about a message. Um, it's really creating a program so we know where everything is and uh, where it should be placed. And it's not a matter of constantly changing them. It's really going to be based on what the, what the conditions are right now or in the next several months when we're putting this together. Even though we know that the town center could change and um, the the areas could expand. And at that point, we would, we would have a system of signs that would help us get from here to there. And that's something that the um, economic development with, with the Chamber of Commerce and the business districts have been talking about for quite some time, including our international district areas.
Okay, um, the one other thing is I, I guess I got two more things, but the one other thing I read in the contract is the contract seems to tell in terms of developing design and concept of signs that is eh eh asking Tannagram to develop a number of options. Um, but there doesn't seem to be any guidance to them to say that they need to be the designs have to be a cohesive theme of all the, the different parts so that Lakewood signage, you know, as we've gone through for a couple of years, the discussion about park signs and looked at some options and not, you know, we didn't want them to be significantly different from the gateway signs in eh appearance to be able to go and do that. And I didn't see any guidance of that sort in the scope of work here on the contract. Now, maybe that's understood in talking with them, but it isn't something that, that it's called out to them to pay attention to because they're being asked to develop a variety of different types of signs for different uses. But they're not being pointed at have some compatible compatibility in the different designs. Um, and I guess I would would want to make sure that we're communicating that to them, even if this is the contract.
Did you want me to say something?
I was wanting, did you, eh, we, we have a stakeholders group and Councilmember Bell is on the stakeholders group. So I wasn't sure if you wanted to address that particular element.
Well, I have Ms. Bell and then Mr. Anderson has his hand up over there.
I think that you're just looking for something formalized within the contract that says, we will keep it within the scope of um, what we already have going on for the entry signs. You're just wanting something written in there that says that. But yes, this has been talked about extensively. We've also talked about it at council meetings um, multiple times and gone over that too. So I believe that it is known and in there. And if you're just, are you just looking for something that is written that says that? I, because I think it's in there.
Yeah, and the conversation has been a family of signs and we've been very, very clear. The stakeholders group would be the group that would be helping provide the direction during the process and reviewing that before it comes to council. Council, of course, be making the final decisions. But you'll have seen the process in which we got there. But this firm, when we were talking about the park sign and clearly laid out in that, in the original um, agreement, that we were looking for something that met with the um, whatever is in the city. And if it wasn't going to match that, there would be a reason why. And so they're very, this is what they do. And so they're very, they were telling us, we need to have, you know, this family of signs and this consistency. And so I think that's very, very clear in what the conversations have all been and the direction that we've gone. But we can double check to make sure if that language isn't stated in some fashion. But it is quite clear and at least the work product that we've done so far.
Okay, I guess I'm just, because the scope of work reads to me there is several distinct projects. And and there's nothing in the language that talks about the relationship of the projects being you know, you know, look at each one. I I eh eh, and and so I I I, and and maybe it doesn't have to be in the contract as long as the stakeholder group that is monitoring the their work and it's going to come back to us is going to knows that that's a desirable outcome. Um, and then, Mr. Mayor, the, the only other thing that I would note is that on the on the, on, on the, on the on the funding the, on the funding summary, uh, I, I think that the assumption of fifty thousand dollars of ARPA funds is still an assumption that we've not approved. That is not, we, we haven't approved putting fifty thousand dollars of ARPA funds into the city signage.
It's coming from the reader board allocation to help with the design of that element and how it consists with everything else. So that was the intent, was to use funds that had already been appropriated for the reader board signs to be used to help design and locate and the technology review that goes with that. So that was the fifty thousand dollars.
So there was money to acquire the reader board signs?
It was
In any, any ARPA, I recall that.
Correct, yes.
But, but that's not, but it's not the same fifty thousand dollars referenced here.
It's eh, of the three hundred and sixty-three, I think, thousand that you've allocated, it would be fifty thousand of that fund to help do the design work to determine which reader boards you want, where they should be. That's where those resources are coming from. That's where we're suggesting the resources are coming from.
And we think we have enough to do the acquisition installation.
We won't know until we do the research because we have had the communications has had a hard time getting anybody to give them a price quote for what a reader board even costs because we can't say if it's short and wide or tall, if it's going to be on a brick base. So a part of it is to do that reader board design and get the cost estimates in which to do.
But in the, in the, in the contract funding summary, it indicates that the reader board portion of the contract is twenty-two thousand, four hundred dollars. And then potential revenue sources, fifty thousand of, of ARPA funds. And if that fifty thousand is reader board dollars, you know, eh, it would seem that the ARPA fund should be twenty-two thousand, two forty because it's tied to the reader boards.
Well, eh, in the ARPA description, it's communications and reader board. So it's about communicating with the public in a way that deals with events and emergencies and things like that. And so a council can determine how those resources are spent, but we know that it's more than just the reader board. It's how does that information get um, put into the element of communications for that description, which you have on, I think, page uh, twenty-six. So um, yeah, the actual just portion of this whole project is the twenty-two thousand and some odd dollars specifically for that element. But it is going to be, it's all going to be happening at the same time and very interactive. We just tried to pull it apart so we could look at phased if council chose to do that.
So maybe my question is, the fifty thousand dollars that's envisioned here on page twenty-four is the contract wouldn't cover, we include fifty thousand dollars coming from our, the ARPA dollars and and would require ninety-one thousand change from the general fund, okay? Um, that that is not dependent upon the council approving an additional fifty thousand dollars out of ARPA funds beyond what has already been approved.
Correct.
Okay, so I'm, so I'm guessing, I'm wondering, why does it say potential? I don't know. What, that's, eh, eh, that, that, that's fine, as long as it's in another, not another fifty thousand dollars.
Funds that have already been allocated to our project.
Sure, I hear you. If the, if the council member has a lot more questions, we should probably just kick this forward a couple of weeks. Let me, let me get Mr. Anderson there. He's been patiently waving with his hand up. Mr. Anderson?
Uh, thank you. Um, I have concerns along the lines of Mr. Branster's inquiry. I, I don't remember voting to spend fifty thousand dollars on a consultant when I was voting to approve our company for signage. And I always, the antenna back in my head always go up when I see a five hundred percent plus increase in a consulting contract. Uh, how much? Just as a kind of an order of magnitude, if we spent twenty-five thousand dollars of the original contract for park monuments and we actually acquired and installed the park monuments, how much would that cost?
Uh, twenty-five thousand is the design and engineering for just the monuments. And then in our park CIP, we have oh, how much is it? I think it's thirty thousand per sign, so it's uh, three hundred and thirty thousand-ish to implement the construction and installation of those signs.
So it's three hundred, three hundred thousand, okay. How much would it cost to implement city wayfinding?
City wayfinding for the design element of it or the installation?
No, the whole thing, the whole thing.
Well, we don't know because
Because it, it appears that we're embarking on a project here that's in order of several orders of magnitude over what we initially contemplated when we eh initiated the study.
Correct.
Eh, and I'm not ready to spend that money. I guess that's the thing. Well, and somebody's got to convince me why eh, when, when we commit to this, there's going to be an expectation that we're going to do these things. And I don't see any prioritization, cost analysis. Uh, all I see is the is a five hundred and sixty percent increase in the consultant's contract and potentially a delay in getting the park monuments in because we're looking at all these other things. So I'm, I'm very, very hesitant to move forward with spending this more much money and 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 redirecting ARPA money at the same time. I think we should bite off smaller chunks.
Any other questions or comments? Again, it's a study session. We're not taking action tonight. Um, comments or questions? Anyone else? Mr. Boki?
No, when I initially looked at it, I had similar concerns about the the scope of the cost. I certainly understand the need to have some consistency in the holistic approach to signs in the city. I think that was one of the directives that came out. You know, one wonders on the reader board signage, if we only had two of them that we approved with ARPA funds, whether our comms and or public works folks can make the decision without having to do a lot of study on that in terms of best location based on traffic counts and site distances and those kinds of things as opposed to consultant telling us. But, you know, I'm I'm just a conservative guy here. Um, and the only other comment I thought about the downtown corridor wayfinding, I, I know it's probably an essential city function to kind of do that. One wonders if the businesses that will be benefited by it might contribute or participate in that. I don't know whether that's a, a kite opportunity for participation, that they might say, that's a fantastic opportunity for us to contribute for our mutual benefit or not. I don't know. Ms. Bell?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a question or I guess a concern about the reader boards not being included with the entirety of the signage because it's not, you're not just putting a screen up. It is packaged. There is branding around it. It, there's certain ways that it's going to look, that's going to be with all of the other signage that's going around. So I would hope that that would at least be considered because you can't just cherry pick and say, okay, well, let's just get these signs up and hope that they tie in with all of the rest of the signs. So that would be my concern about say, moving forward with just getting the reader boards, picking a location, they would have to make sure that they tie in with everything else. So you get that family of products. Like I said, it's just not a screen. There's a shell around it, or it could be one that's closer to the ground. It might not be one that is up high. So there's a lot of consideration. So that would be my concern with that. I also did like the idea of how you said some of these could be broken off. Not everything has to be done at once. So that would be something I would be interested in seeing how they would possibly do that. So maybe some of these costs and different things could be deferred or give time to talk with Kite, things like that to incorporate how um, it would be better tied in through downtown.
Ms. Dottor.
So in, in following up with that as well, um, we, that's why this was divided up into these different project areas so a council could do that with specifically project four being the most um, the easiest one, I think, to maybe phase into phase two after we saw what, what was happening with the first ones because um, we did talk about bringing kite in, or we did talk about bringing in um, other businesses that might, you know, maybe the international district represented. So that could be something that's done at a different time or phased in. Um, uh, so that, that would need to be pulled out. I am the communications department has clarified or emphasized that they do need some support in order to meet your expectation of putting reader boards in. And that's why it was tied into this. So that conversation um, has occurred and they're, they're asking for that kind of support. Um, the other um, wayfinding is just that significant change at the entrance to Fort Silicon Park is to really take a look at how that could work and then the wayfinding throughout the community. So it is a family of products. We could do some prioritization and the cost analysis. The reason that um, public works engineering was very excited about having this comprehensive look here is is that they are walking, they're moving forward with large capital projects. And that they could actually pay for those signs as part of that capital project if they knew what signs to get. But they have to do it on the front end, at least. That's what we've been told. So um, so that was the idea of the implementation happening um, with funds that might already be allocated or would be allocated to projects. Um, but probably project four would be the easiest one to pull and to phase um, after maybe more work had been done with um, getting additional uh, partners in line to do that. So um,
So we could parse this down potentially?
I beg your pardon?
We could parse it down a little bit.
Sure. And yeah, the downtown wayfinding is like thirty-five thousand out of this. Um, but one of the ideas is, is that the citywide, looking at the city citywide, um, uh, working with um, this consultant and just analyzing what is currently happening in the city with just a mishmash of signs that were just put out of, um, I'm not sure stra- strategically, but out of need um, is that um, we could just get a family of signs and we could get, and we could go from there and start creating whatever signs we want and figuring out where we want to put them. But what happens is, is that you're not getting that citywide comprehensive expertise. You know, you're going to look at putting vehicular type signs, maybe where pedestrian signs need to be and pedestrian signs not located in the right spots to meet the expectations of different areas. So um, we don't have that expertise in-house and so that's why we're looking for it. But, but if council would like us to prioritize these and put them in um, more of a menu form where you could select what you think you can afford or what you're interested in doing first, second, third and fourth, we can, we could get that and bring it back to you.
Mr. Anderson and then Mr. Branster.
Thank you. Um, on funding, I was reminded that, you know, the Tacoma Dome opened in nineteen eighty-three. I was a young associate attorney in Tacoma. We represented a bank. Uh, not long thereafter, while I was still an associate, so it was in the next couple of years. Uh, what, a project I worked on was to write a contract with the city of Tacoma for the installation of the first sign on the freeway that advertised Tacoma Dome events. It didn't cost the city anything, but the bank got so many minutes, an hour of advertising for the next twenty years. They really actually pulled one over on the city on that. Uh, they got more than they should have out of it. But uh, the point is that we may have an opportunity to have someone else fund reader board signs. Uh, if we sell, just like bus, so bus advertising, I, I, I think you're probably in a better might be a better situation to get a contract for five years with one advertiser, but uh, with a morals clause. But uh, it's another funding
But it's another funding opportunity. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Bransdatter?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, you know, I, I think when this comes back to us, you know, I, I'd really like to see two options. One is I think that projects two and three are projects of where we've already got and have spoken about the funding to this contract, creating a plan that, that, that we're willing to go through and got, got some vision of the funding to actually implement them. And so if we can look, we can look at the whole contract, but I'd also like to see what a contract would look like that just includes projects two and three, which is the parks piece, which where we, which is already a part of our, 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 our CIP and the reader board, which is already a project that we made a commitment to to have, to, to be able to go and do that. The other two are significant projects, but we, you know, we haven't inserted them into our, into our CRP. And I grant what's happened is that they're, they're, they're work that we've been doing piecemeal. But and, and then maybe we would want to come back and, and and, and talk about wanting to do that as a citywide project, but I kind of like to look at that more closely rather than just starting with a consultant contract with a citywide project. But I'm willing to look at both this contract again, as well as maybe an abbreviated contract, which is just projects two and three, which I think we're ready to move forward on.
Thank you, Mr. Bransdatter. A vigorous opposition to that concept of focusing initially on a contract that comes back to us that includes projects. Numerated differently here. I think it's the park identity signs project two, along with the electronic reader board signs project three. Maybe a contract piece and then maybe for later determination discussion, the wayfinding piece. Mr. Anderson, are you-
Yeah, and I, and I think we'd, we'd also a frame of reference on this consultant's work to be able to then ask him to move forward with another contract for some citywide project.
Everyone somewhat comfortable with that? I mean, part of it's timing too, right? Because we've been kind of waiting for this park identity sign redesign piece for some period of time. And sooner than later, it would be preferable to get going on that along with the reader board sign. I think we allocated those funds almost two years ago now in the reader boards. And so hopefully we can get that done this year if possible. But they need to be mindful, obviously, and how it plays in with any sort of citywide wayfinding, because those are wayfinding in effect, right? I mean, it might be kind of helpful to in the next round in a study session, have the gentleman come meet with us via Zoom and provide a little bit of method to the madness and what he's hopeful to accomplish, because it, it does seem like a pretty significant cost. I know he's swagging it, as most consultants do, as best they can to estimate work hours at their rate, but maybe we could tell him, you know, for the wayfinding, we're willing to do the sum of X. And for projects two and three, you know, we're okay with those numbers, but for projects one and four, we're not excited about ninety-some odd thousand, but what can you do for us for fifty or something like that? I don't know. It's, it just seems like a lot of money for the, the wayfinding signage. Mr. Boki?
Yeah, and I'm going to play the role of agreeing with almost everybody. I, 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 I am kind of taken aback by the, by the cost. But I also understand what Ms. Bell is telling us, which is we've kind of always in Lakewood kind of catch as catch can, right? It's kind of like, oh, yeah. When was those, when was that sign at that park put in? Well, it was put in by a service club in nineteen seventy-five and you know, we had that with our, with our, with our welcome to Lakewood signs, right? There were signs up that were put up by groups, very well meaning and at the time before Lakewood was a city or right around the time Lakewood was, I don't know. There's no consistency. There's no plan. You know, I would point out things like that, that the two high schools are the ones that probably where people are coming from the farthest to actually like look for them, right? Harry Lang Stadium. And people do use their phones, so you have to be thoughtful about, well, they don't, you know, they, they can most people can get close, so, so you do want some style to it. Otherwise, you're just directional signs, but they, they have been missed out. It's correct. We just have stuff all over the places thrown up. It might have been put up by the county. It might have been put up by the city. I don't know. So I do, I am intrigued by the idea of a plan done professionally. I am, but I am a little bit kind of like on the cost, kind of like, wow, so.
Well, it seems to me that we-
I've said everything I can say.
No, you, you did a fine job. Seems to me we've got consensus on moving projects two and three forward, which is the park identity signs and the electronic reader board signs. Certainly, there needs to be some sort of consistent theme with the packaging or whatever one does with those signs that matches or is consistent with all the entrance signs we've spent a few shekels on over the years. And, you know, they look nice, but we want to make them consistent as best we can, I think. And then maybe having to come back and maybe give us a value engineered approach to the wayfinding signage on projects one and four. And maybe that is what it is, but it just seems like it's built in with a lot of estimated hours, you know, and travel time. Maybe the guy that lived in Lakewood for a period of time, he wants to fly back four times. But I get it. And that's with other people on his team to help do all that, but.
Right. With the original park sign, we didn't build any travel into that. We really took advantage of the holiday travel season because they were in and around and it was a very small contract and you recognize that. But when we were looking at something, you know, a city of sixty thousand people, twenty square miles, there's a lot that goes into a comprehensive plan if we really wanted to do that. So I think that's what you saw reflected in this. It's a, I think it's the cost of doing what we want to see happen, but if we're not at that point and we're not thinking that's the right price, then, then we could, because I think the price is there for what what we want to have happen. If we want to start with two and three, phase out those, phase in those other elements once we've seen some of that work done and let them know. We can do that as well. Whatever the direction of council is, we'll go forward with you on that.
That sounds good. So we're good on two and three to get started. Come, come back and chat with us about one and four later. Looks like we're good.
Okay.
Okay. And because I've been sitting now for almost two and a half hours, why don't we take a five minute just break real quick before we jump into the street ends report, because that's going to take some time.
Okay.
So.
Oh, why not? Can't stay, sorry.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, are we back on record there? Ms. Schumacher?
Ms. Schumacher, are we ready to go?
We're ready to go. Very good. Well, welcome back. We will now turn to a street ends report update. And again, we've got Ms. Dodsworth to give us a very thorough report, it looks like.
I'm going to introduce the topic and then I'll, well, introduce now Stacy Redding. She's our capital projects coordinator. She was here several weeks ago. She's going to present the report to council, but I just wanted to start off with that. One of our work products last year was to update the report, street end report from two thousand and nine. So we pulled together a team from J. Brennan and Associates, and they worked with us on updating the, the report. The original report back in two thousand and nine, I was involved with that as well. In fact, we've done this a couple of times, but that, there was quite a bit of public outreach. It was a report that was created and really focused on sort of inventory, topography. You know, what do we have? What does it look like? What do we think we might want to do with it? And that was really kind of the end of the report. And we got a lot of feedback from the community. Quite clearly, the folks that lived on either side of these properties were very concerned about privacy and safety and things like that. Folks that lived a block away or a little while away wanted to have access to the water. You know, we have very limited public access to the water in the city of Lakewood, and it's been you know, requested by, in every survey and comprehensive plans and all of those things. So anyway, so we had the original study from back in two thousand and nine. It's kind of sat there for a while. Nothing's really happened. And so we're going to come forward and share with you an update to that project. And we really looked a little bit more as, as we talked about, we were kind of at the five thousand or fifty thousand foot level, and now we've gotten a little bit closer just to look at if we were to utilize these street ends, what might they look like and how might they be accessible to our community? And so that's really what we're going to share tonight is an update from that report. And so Stacy, we'll get started.
Great. And then we'll chat about next steps at the end of it, obviously, including on some of the recommendations. Really going forward and doing the process of selling some of the street ends you've mentioned here. So we'll get there, though.
Talk about selling the street ends?
Yeah, there's some vacation recommendations on a couple of them that I saw.
We'll review. We'll touch on the previous recommendations as well as the current assessments.
Okay, great.
Here we go. Starting off, let's briefly review what is a street end. The city is typically defined a street end as the area between a street terminating at the shoreline and the water. The land is most commonly designated right of way. Sometimes street ends can be designated as a parcel. And they are, street end sites are also designated public access easements. As Mary just spoke about, in two thousand and nine, an assessment of fourteen total street ends around four lakes within the city was conducted. Public meetings were held September two thousand and seven through January of two thousand and eight. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Board reviewed the report and public feedback was, was gathered May through June of two thousand and eight.
I'm shocked, by the way, that it's been that long since we did this. Just seems like yesterday.
Here's a map showing the street ends abutting four lakes in numerical order, starting with Lake Silicon and ending on Gravel Lake. The same list format from the original study was used in our current assessment. However, site number seven, Edgewater Park on Lake Silicon and site number fourteen, Lakeland Avenue on American Lake, included in the two thousand and nine study have been excluded from the current scope. In two thousand and nine, the Parks and Rec- The Parks and Recreation Advisory Board developed an evaluation matrix of recommendations for all fourteen sites. The resulting matrix shown here was adopted in the two thousand and twenty comprehensive legacy plan and includes thirteen of the original fourteen sites. Since two thousand and nine, no significant action or additional studies have been conducted at any of the sites except Lakeland Avenue, which was sold to adjacent property owners in two thousand and seventeen. The Parks Board provided a list of additional recommendations included in the legacy plan as noted on page two hundred and two. Those recommendations read as follows. Develop a formal master plan for each site designated maintain, improve, or develop. Create signage and a management plan for each site that is designated maintain, improve, or develop. Maintain Wadsworth for public use, including boat launchings. Establish a formal lease policy for use Establish a formal lease policy for use of properties designated lease, so they are available for future consideration. Use existing waterfront waterfront parks as anchors from which to expand use through acquisition. Consider eminent domain to increase lakefront access and to expand existing lakefront parks. Work with neighbors and the police department to develop block watches at improved sites. And reexamine options after five years if adjoining property owners haven't leased or purchased designated sites. There are many state and local policy documents supporting improved and equitable public access to the water, shoreline habitat improvement, environmental conservation, diversity of recreation and public education. Some of those documents includes the state squirt plan, shoreline management act, city comprehensive plan, city legacy pros plan, and the Lakewood shoreline management program. As Mary mentioned, the Seattle landscape architecture firm J Brennan and Associates was hired by the city to support this study. They have previous experience with street end design and development for the city of Seattle and have also developed a master plan for the street ends in the city of Shalane. As previously noted, the current study scope included twelve street end sites on four lakes. A city map and list just below the PowerPoint screen. Is there for reference to orient yourself as we go through the PowerPoint. The current assessment consisted of site analysis through policy research, site visits and review of the previous two thousand and nine study. G I S data with aerial photography from two thousand and fourteen and utility and parcel data was utilized for base maps and schematic design development. No surveys were conducted. Site plans and cost estimates were created and refined following site analysis. With the form final reports summarizing all data from the site lists in numerical order as presented in the final report. Prior to the design development, a list of comprehensive program goals were developed to guide schematic design. Those included improve public access to the water at each site. ADA access at a minimum of one site per lake. Septed design supporting open views to and through each site. Improve circulation paths and signage to support public use and experience. And site development that would would promote a diverse recreation experience, including walking, picnicking, fishing, socializing, waiting, wildlife viewing, or hand carry boat access. Promoting environmental stewardship through use of native plantings, natural materials and low impact development strategies was also utilized. The design approach was also guided by a conservative approach to development. A parking strategy was created to support the following goals. Maximize open space and showing habitat through utilizing existing available on street parking and the right of way for all sites. Unless an accessible route was proposed. For those sites, a singular parking stall was included to meet accessible van guidelines. Bicycle parking was proposed for each site as well as a site marker and signage to support wayfinding and place making. Gravel circulation paths were proposed for all sites. And a paved asphalt path was designated for ADA routes. Fencing were not existing was proposed to dilate the adjacent residential parts parcels and prevent future encroachment of the sites. Existing trees were field verified during site visits and pervert preserved. Shoreline enhancements were proposed to support wildlife and human use with natural elements such as logs and boulders to finding shorelines. Preventing erosion and offering natural seating elements for the public use. And current encroachment was also assumed to be resolved and development within those areas was proposed to a varying degree at a site by site basis. Here here is an example of a site plan to familiarize you with the graphic symbols consistent with these schematic designs. Existing trees are shown in gray by these symbols. A consistent public art graphic theme, a water droplet or wave ripple was proposed at each entry plaza to support place making gathering and wayfinding. Site markers are noted by these small dots within or near each entry plaza as shown in concept on the next slide. And diagonally hatched fields define areas of apparent encroachment for each site. Not shown on these images, but included in each site design are concrete bollards which were proposed on the sites. At the end of the improved paved area to prevent vehicular access beyond the entry plaza. Additional visuals to support proposed site energy amenities include concrete double rail fencing. Site markers were developed in material and concept for cost estimates and included a stainless steel picket with the site or lake name and blue wave pattern. Consistent with public art theme. The public art at the plazas was proposed as a reflective blue material utilizing utilized in road striping. A theme of a water droplet or wave design is consistent at each site. Low impact shoreline materials were proposed, including rocks, gravel and logs. These will serve dual purpose as natural seating and shoreline habitat features as shown in the photo. So let's begin reviewing the site plan, starting with Lake Silicon and sites one through six of the assessment. Site number one, Westlake Avenue is on the northwest corner of the lake with sites two through six. As you travel counterclockwise around Lake Silicon, ending on Hollyhedge Lane. Site number one, Westlake Avenue. This site was chosen as the accessible site for Lake Silicon due to the width and slope, the slope of the site. Minimal trees and no apparent or significant encroachment. Current use was evident as a trail through the existing brush made by the community and a pair of lawn chairs that the lake says edge was found during our site visit. Proposed design includes a switchback asphalt trail to the lakeshore, an accessible parking stall. Entry Plaza was site marker and low native vegetation proposed along the site border. Shoreline improvements include rock retaining walls, gravel enhanced enhanced beach substrate. And a concrete seat wall that retains the adjacent grade, the accessible route. There are a few existing trees along the north and south borders of the site which have been retained. Site number two, Mount Tacoma Drive. The street end was buffered from view and pedestrian access by a low berm and dense robe conifer trees planted by the community at the end of the pavement. Once inside the site, there's a gentle slope to the lakeshore. The proposed design includes a new asphalt apron, entry plaza and meandering gravel pathway to the shore. The site landscaping is proposed as an open meadow, which will open and maintain views to the water and provide opportunities for passive activities. Such as picnicking, socializing or wildlife viewing. No parking was proposed at this site while the road was narrow. There was there appeared to be opportunities for parking in the right of way along the shoulder throughout the neighborhood. Site number three, Beach Lane. The site felt as though it was part of the adjacent neighboring property as it includes lawn ornamental plantings and a small garden connected to the residents along the south order. The site has minimal slope and the shoreline is fairly close to the end of the street, offering open views of the water. Off street parking was not proposed for this site. The site design is similar to the previous street down with an entry plaza, native meadow plantings, providing a great view of the lake and maintaining open sight lines from the street to the shoreline. A few small vine maples were proposed along the south border to buffer the adjacent residential landscape and provide habitat. There's a small seating area with a picnic table to maximize the view of the bridge to the north of the uh, to the just to the north of this shoreline. And a set of stone steps provides access to the shoreline while maintaining the grade along the beach. Natural shoreline enhancements of logs, boulders and gravel provide shoreline habitat will keep in the water and shoreline accessible to community users. Site number four, Lake Avenue. The site is located near the intersection of Meadow Road Southwest and Lake Avenue Southwest and is on the east shore of Lake Silicon. There's a narrow trail through the existing vegetation to the lake and apparent encroachment from the residence residential lot to the north. As evident on this picture, there was also a stream of surface stormwater from the street. And through the site into the lake. The proposed design reclaimed a portion of the apparent encroachment area to the north. By relocating the existing fence line. A daylighted stormwater swell was also proposed to channel stormwater and prevent site erosion. The proposed access is fairly straight path from the entry plaza to the lakeshore with a small bench overlooking the lake. Landscaping improvements consist of maintaining significant trees bordering the southern edge of the site. With low and low native plantings bordering both edges and maintaining open sight lines. Site number five, one hundredth Street. This site was much wider than most street ends with an approximate right of way width of eighty feet. The site had moderate slope to the water and several significant trees scattered throughout. There was significant apparent encroachment from the adjacent residents along the south as noted by the shaded area and the plan. Proposed improvements included retaining the significant trees by meandering the access route from the entry to the shoreline. A small set of timber steps transitions the path to the beach area, which is framed by low plantings on either side of the site. Similar to Lake Avenue, the site also has proposed swell to direct stormwater from the site to the lake. And site number six, Hollyhedge Lane. This is the last street end assessed on Lake Silicon found along the central eastern shoreline of the lake, just north of the bridge. The site was the most narrow of all street ends within the right of way. At only fifteen feet in total width. The site had significant encroachment as noted by the timber retaining wall in this photo and landscaping from adjacent residential houses shown in plan view. Due to the constraints of the site and the existing retaining wall preventing pedestrian access through the site, no development was proposed during this this assessment. It should also be noted that the right of where right of way appears to terminate at the lakeshore as as evident in the plan. Moving to American Lake, site number eight, Lake City Boulevard is just east of American Lake Park on the north shore of American Lake. And Wadsworth Street along the south shore of the lake, just west of Harry Todd Park in the Silicon neighborhood. Starting with site number eight, Lake City Boulevard, the site is surrounded on three sides by a channelling fence and retaining wall with access gate managed by park staff. The site has a feel of a small pocket park and has current parking spaces accommodating site use. There's a utility vault in the lake that the community has constructed a land bridge to access the vault from shore, which is predominantly used for fishing. As you can see in the photo from our site visit. Here are some additional pictures from the site. There's a small picnic area at the shoreline and a small patch of open sloping lawn framed by vegetation growing on the fence line. The picture on the right shows the current angled parking along the left side of the street just outside the gate. This site was chosen to develop ADA access between the street, two street ends on American Lake. Angle parking includes one accessible and two standard parking stalls adjacent to the small entry plaza. As noted in the shaded areas on the plan, there is significant encroachment from the residence to the south, which includes a sloping driveway to a garage as well as some land at the shoreline. The site plan did not account for resolution to this encroachment, but instead maintained a similar layout to the existing site. A row of trees to the south border borders, a switchback accessible route and a boardwalk to the lakeshore. Terminating at a raised fishing pier. There's a small beach maintained along the north portion of the site and an accessible picnic table resting point along the pathway. Site number nine, Wadsworth Street. This narrow site on the south shore of American Lake includes a launch that supports water access to residents of Silkox Island. For those familiar with the area, Bill's boathouse is located immediately to the north of the site. There's no apparent encroachment and the site also is the only street end with an associated parcel. Due to the launch and Silkoc Island access, the street end currently has heavy use from the community. Proposed site improvements were minimal and included paving improvements for the launch and a graphic street art and site marker consistent with the other sites. Low native plantings would replace the weedy patch flanking the southwest border and parking to support the site is proposed in the right of way where available within the surrounding neighborhood neighborhood. Moving to Lake Louise, there are two street ends will be reviewing both on the eastern shore of the lake and located fairly close to one another. Site number ten, one hundred and fourth street and Melody Lane and site number eleven, Holden Street. Site number ten, this site is located on the corner of one hundred and fourth and Melody Lane on Lake Louise. There's an existing pump station at the corner which dominates the site as shown in the picture on the right. Similar to Wadsworth, the site also serves as as a public boat launch for the community. As noted on our site visit, the gravel area behind the pump vault had a small seating area with furnishings and a trash can provided by community members. While the site is heavily used, there are many factors working against ease of access for the launch, including a steep and worn gravel ramp into the lake. Its situation on a corner turn. And the concrete wall of the adjacent utility vault. These factors create a challenging situation for ease of use. There's also no immediate off street parking for vehicles or small trailers, further compounding an array of problem solving boaters must navigate to use the launch. Noted on the hatch area of the site plan at the top left. There are significant encroachment of the neighboring residents and landscape to the north. Partial reclamation of the area provides an alternate pedestrian access route from the launch area with a set of steps. Landscaping and a small terrace. Improvements to launch include a site marker, graphic street art and resurfacing of the gravel launch with a concrete ramp. The beach area proposes to replace the current gravel with habitat appropriate substrate, boulders and logs, which would provide natural seating opportunities as well as low impact habitat improvement to the shoreline. Site number eleven is the second site on Lake Louise located just south of Melody Lane. And similarly, there's a stormwater vault at the site's entry. The site was heavily vegetated with many invasive species and significant trees. An existing stormwater swell to the north flowing from the vault to the lake is proposed to remain as shown on the site plan. The site was chosen to accommodate ADA access to the to the lake and a small parking area is proposed just in front of the existing stormwater vault. The entry plaza to the south edge of the site leads to a softly meandering asphalt path. Terminating at a picnic seating area along the shoreline. A small set of stone steps is proposed to the beach area with similar treatment of low impact shoreline improvements as noted in each of the other sites. Moving on to sites. Uh, twelve and thirteen on Gravel Lake, site number twelve Hilltop Lane and site number thirteen Linwood Lane. Both sites are on the southeast corner of Gravel Lake and are fairly close to one another as noted on the map. Beginning with site number twelve Hilltop Lane, as evident in this photo, there's moderate encroachment of the site by this rockery retaining wall at the site entry. Due to the dense blackberry bramble also shown in the photo, our design team was not able to access the site by foot. Due to the constraints of physical access, a site plan was not developed by design staff. The site is heavily wooded and very steep as evident in the aerial photography and base map. Apart from the steep grade at the entry and existing retaining wall, it should be noted that the terrain and existing conditions are almost identical to the other street end on Gravel Lake, a few blocks to the south, Linwood Lane. And therefore, development potential for this site would be similar in nature. The second and final street under assessed in the study is site number thirteen Linwood Lane. The site sits between two large, single family residential homes with moderate encroachment, including landscaping and a four foot tall fence erected by the community at the site entry as shown in the upper left town photo. The site has a large number of significant trees, mostly situated just before the very steep slope to the lake. Differing from Hilltop Lane, the initial one third of the site is fairly level. And therefore, the site was chosen to offer an accessible route between the two gravelly lake sites. While parking was not proposed, a small plaza area with bike racks support public use of the site. Due to the steep grade adjacent to the shoreline, the accessible route terminates at the top of the slope, offering a viewpoint overlooking the lake. The path transitions to a switch, switchback trail system beyond the accessible viewpoint. With a series of timber steps around the existing trees down to this deepish portion of the trail. The site angles to the north just before the shoreline and terminates at an improved beach. Concluding the site analysis and plans for each street end, let's review some additional considerations that arose during the assessment. Management considerations during programmatic programming and design development included site security, operations and maintenance and enforcement. Proposed designs include open access from the street with bollards and no fencing or gate enclosures. Trash cans were not proposed in Trash cans were not proposed in favor of a pack it in, pack it out policy and no irrigation was proposed for landscaped areas. I also want to verbalize the intent of the proposed designs to open up sightlines by removing invasive plants and replacing. With natives under three feet tall with uh or open meadows in and around the existing trees. Existing trees would be limbed up to maintain sight into and around each site. Anytime the public is exposed to water, access could create potential safety considerations. The prox the proximity of available on-street parking and the right-of-way varied at each site. And signage was not proposed to identify areas of no parking. Additionally, no street lighting or cameras were proposed as part of the schematic design or cost estimates. Each of these issues would require ongoing conversations between city staff, neighborhood residents and the public to support safe use and future maintenance for each site. Additional design considerations, the city can could consider inclusion of the street end signage as part of the comprehensive city sign contract just reviewed before this presentation. Graphic art within the plaza supporting site identity or a conceptual theme could be included. And potential public art programs supported by the Arts Commission. Each site could have a unique neighborhood or community involvement or development of an overall concept. Could be explored as part of a separate design scope. It should also be noted that apparent encroachment, including landscaping, grading and retaining or structures were noted at most sites. Verification of the encroachment should be formally verified by a survey of each site and the resolution. Outcome, cost and timelines to resolve each occurrence are unknown. In summary, there are significant opportunities at most of the twelve sites that were assessed. Improvement of the existing conditions to support public access to the water at these sites would greatly increase the available recreation opportunities. Through equitable and conservative approach to development. Low-impact development practices, including impervious pathways, native plantings. Stormwater swells and natural shoreline enhancements also support increased shoreline habitat throughout the city. Next steps. This is an overall summary of the site's development costs. Costs were projected with a ten percent escalation to twenty twenty-four and include sales tax, a permanent allowance. And a twenty-five percent design contingency due to the schematic level of the design. A matrix was developed to aid potential prioritization or phase development of all the sites. Criteria included accessibility, development costs, project scope and apparent encroachment. These criteria were included to measure potential impacts to development of each site. Current use and or lack of existing public access were weighted to support equity and the potential for community use. The highest scores in this matrix subjectively offer the most immediate potential for development. Here is that same list in numerical order of prioritization. Wadsworth is shown at the highest priority due to the current heavy community use. The lowest overall cost of improvements among all sites and with no apparent encroachment to the site. It should also be noted that Hilltop Lane on Gravely Lake has no current design developed, which could weight this street end differently as there were no. Proposed design criteria to assist uh for the matrix scoring. Future acquisition, uh site expansion anchors utilizing street end sites as anchors from which to expand site access to the water. As noted in the legacy plan at the beginning of this presentation. Several sites have current or proposed use that could be supported by adjacent acquisition. Acquisition considerations to the following sites could occur, including. Adding boat trailer parking for Wadsworth or Melody Lane launches. Currently, the sites have difficult and narrow launches launch facilities with no immediate on-street public parking. Lake City Boulevard has high current site use from the community and anticipated improvements would only increase potential for use. Acquisitions could mitigate parking impacts to the adjacent neighborhood and maximize development potential. Gravely Lake was the only lake which did not meet the program goal of a minimum of one site per lake with an accessible route to the shore. Acquisitions could also mitigate impacts to the neighborhood as a public access to this lake is limited.
I'm sorry, what was the last piece, Stacy?
Uh acquisitions could mitigate impacts to the neighborhood as access to the lake was limited. With only two sites.
Right, right, right. Or if may if the idea was there was a separate lot that would provide. Easier access than these long skinny um. Street ends, then that could be a a decision rather than developing two street ends. That way maybe there's one spot that could be. Uh land that could be purchased and that you could create public access to. That would provide um that equity in the community be able to see and be a part of that lake. Versus, you know, trying to get those two stuff. So it's just another anchor.
Mr. Anderson had a quick question.
I thought we were wrapping it up all the way to the end.
Okay.
Really close.
Just about.
A lot of information to to go through here. Additional considerations to the study and future actions could include council approval of the study, prioritization of the sites or phased development. If approved, anticipate inclusion of the development into the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six parks KIP budget. And legal legal review of each site following site surveys and preceding any further design development.
Um thanks, Stacy. I just wanted to follow up that the park board did review this study at their January meeting. And many of those same individuals were part of the two thousand and nine study. So I do have to say in two thousand and nine, you know, there really wasn't. The concept of utilizing the spaces. I mean, there wasn't a lot of master planning in that area. It was really. More about what do we have and and what do we want to do with them. So the idea of. Being able to create this public access in these locations, um park board is very supportive of it and so they did. Support bringing this uh report forward to council with their for consideration. Um and just to note that. When and if anything's to occur on those sites, we would take a look at each one individually. That's what it's been said in our plans all this time is you take that site and then that's when you would really look at. You know, here, this is schematic design. This is a picture showing a lot of great ideas. It's that we would take a look, work with the neighbors, work with the community and. Um talk about really what could happen at that site and um what are the elements that would need to be considered and. And how you could make that happen, dealing with again real surveys and real site assessment. So. Be happy to answer any of your questions, talk about the process.
Mr. Anderson, you ready?
Yes, thank you. So I just wanted to confirm on that um. The scoring. That things aren't weighted within categories. So. Uh ADA access and parking is just as important as cost. Development level proposed is just as important as encroachment. And yet, there's a score. I see those things have value. In each category comparing concerns. As informational, but I just wanted to confirm that that score is merely that a total of those different unweighted categories.
Correct, and and.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, that's that's fine. I you confirmed it. The second one is, I don't see anything. I see current community use. But I don't see anything on the anticipated use and I'd call that the bang for the buck. If we can spend a half million dollars improving a street end and three people use it. Compared to a project where. Five hundred people use it. You know, it it would seem to be that that's an important factor to wait, but I don't see that. Is that considered at all?
We didn't. Well, we looked at from a criteria perspective and and again. Certainly value council's input on other criteria or weighting it in a different way. We took a look at how might we prioritize the various sites. Into what could be done easier, what's lower hanging fruit, what could be done more easily than something that might be much more complicated. So.
Right.
That is kind of what into consideration. We didn't take a look at what the anticipated use was because. We don't have experience with those those types of sites. We know there's lots and lots of use at Lake City Boulevard just because it's. Um we know that people are using that all the time, but we don't have any idea if some of these. Areas that have never been open to the community. They've kind of been vegetated or or used in different ways. So I don't. About valuing that.
Yeah, maybe maybe there's something you s- I think Seattle and some other areas have. Up north with their large lakes have some experience with street ends. And maybe they have some idea of usage, even it's it's how many times they have to pick the trash cans up. Because that would really interest me a lot, which is uh you know, the the whole idea is to provide an amenity that people can use. And it before you spend money, you'd want to know. What's benefit to the public going to be? Something that's pretty that sits there and costs money to maintain or something that people actually get a benefit out of. So. Uh that's one concern I had. Um. One of the uh. A- and in the criterion apparent encroachment, uh. It it appears that it rates. It's a na- it's a negative if there are structures there.
The idea, oh, yes, well, you you with no structures and no apparent encroachment, you received. More points because we know that encroachment and structures is going to create. A conversation or legal status or different areas. It's just going to take longer and cost more. So that that's why.
And like on, what was it, Lake Avenue that we sold? The encroachment actually enhanced our ability to. Monetize it and use that money for other projects. So it seems like it cuts both ways.
You get you get a higher score with no encroachment on this chart, right?
Yeah.
Because it would be.
And if so, if somebody's got a hu- if somebody's got a hundred thousand dollar encroachment, that would help pay for the project. I mean, that's kind of.
That's a great point, great point.
And and that brings me to my point point. One of the. One of the things I think council needs to consider, seeing that there are all these encroachments and we run into it before. Is before we embark on something, I think we have to arrive at a. A uniform policy effect to how to treat encroachments. Landscape's different than structures. Do you s- do we want to sell? Part of it? Do we want to make people take things down? Uh I mean, there's there's a. There are a a variety of variables. Uh and then there's another uh issue I saw in some of these where. Uh there may be an encroachment, but um the the roadway, even if it's a driveway. Is improved to a structure and people are using it for access. And so did you look at the? Did you evaluate? Was there any evaluation done of whether those people would still need? The public right of way for access to buildings?
We didn't specifically do that, but we looked at the schematic design where if especially. The house where it was right next to the driveway where you wouldn't put a parking spot right in front blocking their driveway, moved it to the opposite side so that. Um if that was a requirement to get into that driveway, then you could still do your enhancement to the site. But we didn't, we didn't get into too much specific detail on the encroachments because again, we were looking at it from a little higher level. Um when and if that was the prioritized or the selected site to do something with, we would go into much more. Detail on all the issues of the site.
And then you mentioned legal review, that I had had discussion with the city attorney on this. Uh I recall from our earlier venture down this path that. The legal status of these street ends was not always the same. For example, one we sold was actually a a lot. But uh. There could be an easement, there could be a right of way, could be dedicated on a plat. Uh this some people claim, I have never seen anything to support this. That they had a license agreement from the county before the. Before the uh incorporation of Lakewood for an encroachment. Um. But we haven't done anything with respect to digging deeper on that and seeing what the status of the the dirt is.
Correct.
Yeah.
We just looked at it from a GIS perspective basically and saw where the lines were, knowing that there could be. We did a little bit more research on a couple, but but not into the the depth that. That you're speaking. So again, we we were just notice noting that there's going to be some additional work that would have to happen depending on what that encroachment was. And if it truly there wasn't some secret document that we didn't have access to that the owner may have that could change the outcome of that.
Yeah, my my concern there would be that the uh. The the easements or right-of-way may have arisen from. A variety of different paths and they may not always grant the same rights. So.
Um if if. If I might, uh council member, members of the council, Ms. Doddsworth's been working with the legal department on. On this that would be sort of a next step. If you'll remember the Lakeland Park. Parcel that turned out to maybe be a street end or it might have been a parcel or it might have been a park. At different points when we were working with it, we actually wound up hiring a person whose expertise was in forensic title searching. So it's it's not necessarily going to be as simple as just looking at each of these parcels along the way. And I think. What's being presented tonight is sort of a first step um before we do a deep dive on each one of these, maybe get a feel for the priorities first.
Yeah. And then my last comment would be uh in looking at the price of these. Uh I'm still a great advocate of leaning on Camp Murray for that boat launch site. Could do a lot more for the money and hundreds of people use that site on weekends. Uh. Uh having a nice park there would, I think, be a higher priority in my mind than. Trying to bite off a dozen street ends, but that's an issue for another day.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments, Mr. Bransitter?
Thanks, sir. I I really do appreciate getting. This report with some depth that takes us beyond the. Two thousand and nine report that we were supposed to be doing what we're doing tonight in. Two thousand and fourteen. Uh when 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 we say we'll 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 get back to all this and come up with a plan in five years. So I'm going through. That I I agree with Mr. Anderson that the uh. The encroachment issue is a uh. A a significant matter that we need to address by policy. Rather than site by site and with a different solution to each one, we we sort of need to decide. Generally, how do we want to? Treat encroachments and then. When we get to each individual site, use the same metrics so we're not treating one group of property owners differently and the next time. Uh slight slightly different to be able to go and do that. But I also look at this and I look at the cost and and the most obvious thing to me is we can't do them all at once. Okay, um the the some of the plans here are 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 good and they 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 provide a variety of different types of access to the water. View access uh of some boat launch access uh that could be enhanced uh. That uh, you know, uh some places where there can be a small beach, so you may be able to. To swim and be able to go and do that. On the site that lists. This chart here, the ones that are. Most intriguing to me as to wanting to prioritize early are the ones that. Have a three in uh. Current use. Where it which is there, there are sites that are, those indicate sites that are known to the public and that are used to. To s- to some extent. Uh and um. And I also agree with the idea of starting to get these into the CIP in the twenty-five, twenty-six. Biennium. And that maybe we look at a plan that says. Let's do one site every biennium. And then we could take a look and as we approach that, we would take a look and I I would look at these. Three sites that have a three and decide, you know, which one can we do starting that early? And but then prioritize the ones after that to go on. And but then prioritize the ones after that to go on. I also agree with Mr. Anderson that in terms of access to the lakes. That our negotiations with Camp Murray and the state and of of dealing with. The uh Department of Natural uh Fish and Wildlife's site. That is uh already highly used and is significant is a uh. Is while we are working on this over thirty years. Uh that 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 getting to that as a as a as an actual. In in my view, becoming a new city park is is it is a separate project is is. Something that we need to keep working on and that's 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 something that we have to. Negotiate to get our feet on that land. Uh and then once we do, we can do really good things. Things with it. I had just two questions about the presentation. One is I didn't understand in the discussion about Walsworth, when it said Walsworth is the only site that had a parcel. And I so I so I don't understand what that means. Uh does that mean it just has a parcel number, or is there another piece of land that's adjacent to it that is?
Yes, there's a little piece of land, in fact, I just looked at the file the other day, the city purchased it in two thousand and six. Um and it's a little parcel to this, I guess, south of this on this. And it's a teeny little parcel of land, we got it for forty-eight thousand dollars um back in two thousand and six, and it's adjacent to. Um on the wa- up towards the water side. I'm not, my recollection is the site, it's not, it's cut off from this viewpoint, but the actual. Street end itself is a parcel uh between the two, you know, north and southern. Portions uh that extends to the lake shore. Um the parcel number is included in the report, I can follow up on.
So 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 it's, it it is like we went through with the Lakeland thing, is there, is is the piece, is the shoreline. Inside a parcel, a numbered parcel?
It's separate from this, what we consider the right of way down, but it's a little, it's a street end, we can provide some digital information.
A city-owned parcel?
It's a tiny little piece, you could have a chair there.
Okay, well, that's that's ni- 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 nice to know to do that, that the um. And then um the other thing is is that um is uh. When we looked at if we had age, we have like. A couple of places that we said no development in the in in the thing over there. Uh yeah, yeah, I I think one of our priorities should be to go to the adjacent property owners and make. You know, you know, you know, make them a good offer to get some some dollars that we can use. Cause each of those no development locations, there's another site on the same lake that. That the money could be invested in, you know, and that's what we found to be able to go and do that. And really, on the Lakeland site, you know, part of the problem was the encroachment was so significant that it made more sense to vacate it than to. Try try to resolve it. Um and uh and we were able to put that money into American Lake Park um to do that. But anyway, I I guess my my point is, I I think we ought to look at starting in twenty-five, twenty-six, making a commitment to doing one of these projects. A biennium. Um and I would prioritize the ones that already have some significant use, because they have the greatest potential for the use to increase. If there's uh if if it's developed to be eighty-eight is sensible and 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 I think two of them actually have boat launches. Um which would get uh if if they're enhanced, would 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 provide the right kind of access. So I I I think um the time spent on this study was was well spent, as long as we don't. Put this study on the shelf for fifteen years like we did the last one.
So the priority score ranking, was that done by P RAB?
I'm sorry.
The priority score ranking, was that ultimately done by the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, or who was it, or was it consultant, or what?
Us staff helped develop this and the park board reviewed it and uh approved it. But it certainly, you know, there certainly could be additional criteria that we didn't consider or a different weighting. Uh it was just, it was really just an opportunity to try and figure out when you have uh twelve different sites, how might we put them in some kind of a priority order? And we really, again, looked at current use and what would be the easiest way to maybe do a pilot project, so that you could take a look and say, hey. Um you know, this could work, so.
Pull up the map that had the initial one, two, three, four, fourteen there, just so we can take a look at that in context. Oh, perfect. There we go, well, there she is on the screen there. So you know, is is one of the folks here who actually is fortunate enough to live on one of the lakes. I get the opportunity to see daily, uh at least the use on Silicon Lake, and I have a. Unique perspective perhaps about Silicon Lake and the one. The one thing that I guess my perspective is informed by is that there's a lot of desire for usage. On Silicon Lake, and I applaud that and am open and welcome to seeing more of it. The challenge, and we'll talk about the lakes, I mean, the challenge is Edgewater Park is really the only effective public access we've got. On Lake Silicon and you you know, for the reasons we have all seen, heard, dealt with, it's kind of a mess. And it needs significant help, and I see it, I mean, truly, daily uh in the summertime, yeah, cause I'm. It's right around the corner from my house. So I would think consistent with the priority score ranking in the priority matrix. You know, we gotta look at how we enhance access to these lakes. Uh that meets the spirit and intent of the report, but also is smart, right? And I think you've got the ability to be smart here, you've got access on. One side of the lake through Edgewater, we should provide access on the other side of the lake, likely at. Wa- uh Westlake Avenue, right? And so that really makes sure that people can access Silicon Lake in a uh. Positive way that eliminates the. Constrained, the bottleneck, the overflow, whatever you wanna call it, on Edgewater, it's a mess in the summertime, because there's so many people who really wanna have access to the water. Especially those hot days, oh man, it it was a disaster. Because of the parking and the traffic and, you know, it's it's filled with brambles, we got a little tiny patch of grass and people are kind of. Cramped in there, it's just, it's almost embarrassing that we don't have a better amenity on Silicon Lake. For people like we do on American Lake, and so if you look at American Lake, we've got, I think. Beautiful parks at both Harry Todd and American Lake Park, interestingly enough, almost opposite sides of the lake, right? And so you have the opportunity, notwithstanding the need for more with Camp Murray. We have good, beautifully done parks that have really good access on both sides of American Lake. We don't have any access on gravelly, we know that's been a a consternation over the years. But at least we should start with improving what we've got on Lake Silicon with Edgewater, and I think. This documentation and study reflects that another site on the other side of Silicon Lake would be a good thing to do. So I would certainly advocate for us including that in the CIP consistent with this. Now, how to fund it, I think I go back to the two thousand and nine study. Supported by the conclusions on this one, and I concur with Mr. Branstad. Why don't we call spade a spade on some of these areas that will never get done, they're not logistically feasible, let's vacate and sell them. And be done with it and get the resources so that we can make access a sooner than later probability for people. Because as the climate changes and people have hot summer days, they would love to have more access to the lakes. And as opposed to kicking the can down the road, I'd like to see us consider. You know, selling a couple of these lakes, uh street ends rather, or vacating them, or whatever uh the process legally has to be. To allow property owners to make an offer to the city and say, look, take a hundred feet, for example, that's low in the priority score ranking. It was low in the priority matrix, I think, down there, or no, not so low, it was mid-level. But there are other uses of the money on Silicon Lake that would be more effective than that one, for instance. And that one might generate some some cash, as with some others. I don't know where we go without more input on Lake Louise, because it does look like it at least is being used. Uh for public access, maybe uh that is one where we. Yeah, where we also down on the list here on the priority matrix and on the priority score, it's mid-level. Melody Lane, right, a hundred and fourth, and maybe one where we decide as a council to prioritize that, again, to provide a little more enhanced access on that lake. It really doesn't have as good of access. And then we gotta decide whether we're gonna do anything with Linwood Lane, which scored, already scored rank a little higher. You know, maybe in exchange for that, we sell. The other one, and and my question, I guess, it's illegal as well as to Ms. Dodsworth, is I don't think you can. Hypothetically sell uh two adjacent neighbors both. Street ends on gravelly without having the ability to provide some enhancement. On gravelly for public use, right, is not the.
Correct, it has to be on on the same lane.
Correct, um and uh we've looked at um the MRSC. Review of that RCW, the RCW itself, there's also a fairly old. Attorney General opinion that's tangentially related, anything you take away from the public's access to the lake, you must. Basically restore in some form. Enhance the access, yes, yes, exactly.
So I mean, that's something we can certainly look at, but I would, I would uh number one, applaud the good work on this. And I think we should. Maybe expedite review of. Selling some of the street ends that are never going to be used. Where neighbors would probably be happy to have some finality in their lives, one way or the other, and take those resources and really do a bang-up job like you've reflected here. In enhancing access to Lake Silicon, Lake Louise to start. Uh we've already done yeoman's work on American Lake and we can continue the march as reasonably feasible for Camp Murray, but. We've heard a lot about that already, but at least we do something, that and. Edgewater, which desperately needs. A lot of work, even if it's a weed whacker, you know, and. Taking down some of the brambles there to give people access, effective access this summer. My thoughts.
So just a a couple of questions um. And I'm looking at the chart and uh about, and I'm and I was paging through here, and so. The Lake City Bul- the Lake City Boulevard Park is eighty feet wide or eighty. Feet at the water, is that? And it's heavily used already, is it almost a park now?
Mm-hmm, it's where we direct folks to go fishing, because you're not really supposed to fish near a boat launch. So um that's where we really direct people to go fishing. Uh so that's used year-round that way, and then on those hot, hot summer days, you know, everybody's going anywhere they can to reach the water, so.
But that's where we'll have to have a serious discussion about encroachment. So I'm looking at the size of the lots, I guess, and it doesn't always correspond to the best score. Um the Melody Lane one is the widest, a hundred, hundred feet, it sounds like a shoreline, right, is that correct? I I it just says right away a hundred feet, so I'm I'm just extrapolating, but I may be wrong. So that's the widest, so that seems to me like that would give us the most. Shoreline, right?
I think the biggest problem you have is this big vault that's right in the middle of it, so you go, it's kind of like the old days where you went to American Lake, you had that skinny little boat launch. Before you went to the, or one skinny little road that you'd go, so that's that's the. One of the biggest problems here from the boat launch perspective. You've got um that launch right there, that's why there's a pedestrian uh access on the top portion. Maintaining the boat launch access on the lower portion. Um and it's kind of a blind, you know, it's, have you been down there, it's kind of a challenge, but I mean, it's it's doable, everything's doable, right? But that vault does, it's not a hundred feet all the way up to the boat launch, you've got skinny access on both side and then that area behind the the bulkhead.
So I'm, so I'm wondering, a hundredth avenue. Didn't, is kind of mediocre scoring. But yet, that's the one that's eighty feet wide. It seems like it has the best access, so what what happened to a hundredth there?
The encroachment on that one?
So someone just built, so.
A whole garage.
Uh essentially there. Evident in the picture there on the.
Use a little dot here, you can push this and go right up here, this whole area right here is all hatched. That's all, and and that's the one, I think Councilmember Anderson was is familiar with this one too. But we did, this is the one we did a little extra research on, trying to see if we could find some title or report or letter or. So I mean, it's a whole garage sitting on the right of way, and we couldn't find anything, that doesn't mean it doesn't exist, of course, because we didn't do one of those forensic title searches, but. It's been there for a bit, for sure, even though there were brand new part, there there's new people that had recently moved in there, because. We talked with somebody who was working on, and they were like, we don't know anything about this, and and nice landscaping too, maybe they let us use, keep a shrub.
So, you know, I the it's the width of the lot which seems to really improve access, I mean, like the Hollyhedge one at fifteen feet. Just doesn't seem to make any sense at all, and so that would be one where I would just be like, and it's long and skinny, so you you're, you know.
It's this, yeah, you had to climb over a fence and over. The the hardest access of all of them.
Nobody's gonna access, you know, it's fifteen. So that would be one where I'd be ready to say, well, let's let's move on, I guess, I'm just, I I I would, I'm with Mr. Branstad. On the, if it's already being used, we should, we should enhance it. I don't really know what to do with either gravelly lake site. What one is that right there in that picture?
This is the, one of the Seattle sites.
I was like, man, that's really.
People that did our report actually did several of the Seattle street end sites, and so they're very familiar with that, that's why we could get, probably would get some additional information on. Really, if you build it, will they come, because I think they have, and but we're showing here, because. It's hard to see from a schematic design on top, I mean, I'm a visual person, so this is, you know, what we're showing here is very similar to what you would see in some of those spaces. Just limbing it up, so you had good visibility through, so you didn't have some of the problems that we have, you know, behind bushes with. Any naughty activities, it'd be limbing it up, just a simple little meandering path to get, there's a garbage can there, we're not promoting that. But um we probably will end up doing it, but um just a meandering path down to the water, right, it could be a log at the bottom, it could be a. Uh rock, it could be a picnic table, bench, um but very simple, we're not talking about anything very extravagant. Just a way of opening it up so that the public can access those areas that they own, it's a pub, it's a right of way, so, or could be a right of way, we'd have to do more research, but. So anyway, we just showed this picture to give an idea, I think, and then the next picture showed another site, and I'm. Not sure if it's Seattle, but it just shows a group of uh residents that are are doing native planting, right, you know, like we do on Park Appreciation Day and things like that.
And that was more like, excuse me, but that was more like the lots we have. That lot seems awfully wide there.
This one? They they all vary, you know, each one's a little bit different.
That the one where they were pulling the weeds or planting was quite a bit.
But but it's just showing that it really does create neighborhood, um you know, identity, at least this. Um people start stewarding it, they're cleaning it up. Um you know, we've had that happen in the community when we fix things, they come out and they take care of it, you know, we have a couple of times a year, people do. Major pruning and planting and things, so.
Yeah, I I don't know realistically what the construction timeframe could be, but if 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 you do one a year, or or as Mr. Branstad said. One every two years, I mean, you know, we're into the next half of the next century, there this century, I guess, but um. Like, yeah, I think it's a well-done um plan and and I'm willing to go forward with it, and I and I thought. Like, yeah, I think it's a well-done, um, plan, and, and I'm willing to go forward with it, in a, in a thoughtful manner, um. You know, based upon staff's recommendations of. Um, you know, Wadsworth scores first, but it's out in Stillicum, great, um. It's already there, but I, I think we need something on this side of town, and I'm with the mayor that. You know, Lake Stillicum and, and what we want to do with the Edgewater in the long term is, is gonna be important, but I think the access from the other side of the lake. I think we've, it looks like we've got actually too good. I, I think we've got several locations on, on that side of the lake that we could use, but. The West Lake one at sixty feet gets you, I mean, that's twenty yards, so that should be a pretty good. You could, I think you could do some wonderful things with that, and, uh. So I'm, yeah, let's, let's move forward. Mr. Anderson.
Uh, first of all, I'd like to, uh, kind of second the comments on Edgewater, it, it was, I, I have a very dated, but. Similar experience to many, uh, I, for about a year lived in a house that had. Uh, water access and a dock on Lake Stillicum, and I. Launched a boat a couple of times, the boat was borrowed, the truck hauling it was borrowed, and I was afraid. That I'd lose both of them, and I don't think there's been any improvement to that boat launch in the last forty years, uh, scary. Uh, and, uh, it, that's an amenity that's. Needed by the residents of, that live on the lake in addition to, to people who want lake access, so, I, I think. Access on both sides of the lake would be great, I think Edgewater should be a priority, and now I'm, I'm gonna venture into, uh, what may be. Uh, the, a, a pathway to apostasy, uh, with respect to Gravely Lake access. Um, there is a way. To provide ADA access on something that doesn't have a slope that's more suitable for a diving board, which is. Hilltop and down there, that's, you, you could just put a diving board out on the bank and, and leap off and hit the lake, if the water's high enough. But it's on the other side of the lake, and it's something that might be financed by, uh, the sale of the. Uh, street ends, it might be financed by, of all things, lodging tax money. But there's access at Lake Wald Gardens with a parking lot. And if the city, through negotiation or negotiation under threat of, of condemnation. Were to provide a publicly owned. Or an interest, public interest included access on what would be the east side of that. Down to the lake. It's gently sloped, the cost would be much, much lower. Uh, it could be incorporated in a way that people didn't get direct access to Lake Wald Gardens. Uh, other amenities and bypass submissions, but could get to the lake, and, um. Like I say, you've already got a parking lot, you've already got a slope, you've, you've got a pathway down there, um, and. Lake Walt, or the, uh, Gardens could use the money for. Uh, uh, amenities that they want to improve and maintain, I don't think it, if it wasn't. You know, maybe it's a fif- a fifteen, twenty foot wide swath that's fenced off, um. Some way we could incorp- incorporate that, it'd be much more economical, it'd be much more utilized. Uh, you know, it actually provides somebody the opportunity to, uh, get their wheelchair down to the lake. If, i- in, in, in true ADA access instead of. Wheeling up to, uh, going down a dead end road to, uh, uh, jumping off point, so. Like I said, it may be apostasy, the people who live on Gravely Lake wouldn't like it, the Lake Wald Gardens people wouldn't like it. But it might be a better alternative if you want to provide ADA access to the lake than anything else, both fiscally and practically.
Mr. Branstad.
Okay, well, it's, and just to look at this from the other side of priorities, um, that, uh. I think of, of things that we should look to, to move forward for in the next three years. Um, is that, uh. That, that, first of all, the, the street end at Hollyhedge. Is, is, we ought to just get rid of that, it's, it's overly encroached that. You'd have to park at the mayor's house to get any, any, any access to go, to, 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 to go down there. And it is not on a lake that we don't have other opportunities to, to, to enhance access to, to be able to go and do that. And it's, I think it's actually because of the way that the street runs down there, there's actually multiple property owners. Because there are different property owners on different sides, two on each side of it at the lake, but then there's a couple of other property owners further up that we could. Uh, wo- 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 work with to do that. So I think that, that on, 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 on the bottom of the list, that sort of is, is there, but it goes to the top of ones to, to get rid of. Uh, the, the, um, the other thing is, is that the, the one hundredth street. And it has a significant encroachment of that one house that is to the south side of that. But that's also the one, the widest street ends. That, that maybe could be resolved by, they just vacating. Where the house is. And getting the money from that, and you still, based on the site plan that we saw. Can still that, make, make some viable improvements to what remains. Um, and, and, and look to be able to go and do that. Um, that, the, the melody, a hundred and fourth and Melody Lane, you know, yeah, there's that big. It's a big pump, I think. It's a, you know, uh, and that's not the other, same other type of encroachment, it's in a structure, it isn't landscaping, it's a. It's, it's something that's there that I'm sure has an easement. To be there, it's, um, y- y- you know, not going off, but yet the, 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 the site still is. The encroachment doesn't run all the way to the water, that, uh, that it, it does provide a, a, you know. Boat launch capability, and e- even if I look at it, well, it shows a beach, you know, some sort of a dock to be able to use for. Kayaks or something else, which would be a good lake for it to do that is possible there, so we can, um. Uh, look, look at going through it. And then, you know, when I think about the, the Lake City Boulevard, which I think of, of all, all the street ends that have current use, it's the one that is. Is most used by people who aren't from the immediate neighborhood. Most of these places would be, even if we develop them, would be used by people from the immediate neighborhood that's there. That's the one where we're, as Dodger says, we're already directing people to that, um. Getting places to fish is, continues to be something that. A valuable type of lake access that people mention frequently, to be able to go and do that if you're, if you don't have a boat. Um, so I think, uh. We, you know, we can, uh. Get started and, 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 and sequentially put some things into the legacy plan to move forward with. Step by step, recognizing that this is different from and shouldn't replace building. The main regional. Park system, that, 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 that continues to be a separate CIP that we need to deal with. Um, so, um. You, you know, I'm, um. I'm interested in, in getting some, some analysis, both of, a couple of things to get rid of and, and of what we can do in. Twenty-five, twenty-six. To at least get a first project, uh, moving.
Any other questions or comments?
I, I just note that I, uh, I just note that I pulled up a street view on, uh. A hundredth Street, and that's not a garage, it's a post-supported carport. That is flanged onto the home. So, uh. It's something that could come down relatively easily.
Well, we've had two drunk drivers down that, and one took out one of my boats and totaled it. And, uh, one almost, uh, ran into a few people, the challenge with a hundredth. Is that roundabout causes people who are doing naughty things to launch and go down a hundredth at high rates of speed. And i- it's not the safest location, in my opinion, because we've had two recent. Significant accidents with drunk people or people eluding, careening down a hundredth around that. I don't want to call it a roundabout, but it's a round the top thing, a little roundy thing there. It's not a good location for a bunch of people, I think, down there. Um, but it does provide value, if it were to be sold for enhancement of other locations, it might be safer. Better to do. Yeah, so, uh, yeah, in fact, I've got a nice piece of video I can play from a Ring Door camera of people careening down. That street and crashing into the guardrail and then eluding police on foot and. Crashing into a boat and totaling it, yeah. Not a good spot. So anyway, thank you for the good work. Uh, I think we've got some direction, at least on a couple of them, right? Would be great. There you go.
It's one of those anchors.
Yeah, perfect, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Coffield, if you're still awake up there. Current reports by the city manager, you see all the items tentatively scheduled for the February twenty-one regular city agendas, we'll just jump to, uh, Mr. Coffield's report.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council, just two quick updates, given the time, uh, the first is, uh, Mayor, we received a letter from. Uh, the Gimay Mayor earlier today addressed to you, outlining that their cultural and art festival is scheduled. For Friday, May fifth through Sunday, May seventh. So for those of us who are gonna be traveling back then, we'll probably be looking at leaving on Thursday, May fourth, and then returning on Monday, um, May eighth. But again, that's still tentative as we work out some of the details on the itinerary, um, and then secondly, uh, tomorrow, and, I'm sorry. Uh, Wednesday and Thursday. AWC Association of Washington Cities is gonna be holding their annual city action days down in Olympia, and I know myself and, um. Like, uh, Michael Vargas, uh, in my office is gonna be attending, um, I just did learn, unfortunately, it is sold out, um, but, um. The City of Lakewood will be represented at that event again on Wednesday and Thursday of this week. Uh, so with that, that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Coffield, any questions of the city manager? If not, thank you, I think we chatted and there may be some direction on the. Rebuttal opportunity on the, uh, police data issue that we can chat about later, but I think that's one thing the chief is already working on for you.
Yeah, actually, we talked about that late last week when that article came out, and so as you heard from, um. AC Unfred, um, him and his team are already working on that.
That would be appreciated, thank you. Okay, council comments, Mr. Bokey.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, I'll be brief, uh, PCRC. Uh, General Assembly is, uh, Thursday, I don't know if you've received that, the link and whatnot, apparently you can. Participate remotely, or you can go to the Pierce County Annex. Pantagius Conference Room, which is at the, just the conference room now, it's just used, so they're, they're apparently didn't go to a fancy location this time. Um, that's Thursday, uh, the sixteenth at six P M. So I, I, all I see here is the roll call of the cities and whatnot, and then talking about work plans, so, um. And I haven't heard about another. Of that work group one, I thought that would be on Wednesday too, but I, I haven't heard that yet, so, and I'll have to look at my notes. For that transportation work group that I want, but anyway, I'll send this to the rest of you, if you, are, are you gonna be there, Mr. Mayor to?
I will not be able to make that Thursday, I'll be in Texas.
Okay, um. Okay, I'll send this out to the rest of the group and to the city manager, right, bye.
Anything else? Mr. Branstadter. Ms. Bell. Mr. Anderson.
I just note that on Wednesday I attended Chief Zaro's, uh, in-house, uh, retirement reception, uh. Attendance was, uh, good, uh. It was, uh, representation from other departments and a large turn up from, uh, uh, the force that we had, so, um. Uh, all, all was well, and, uh, he was, uh, appropriately feted, and, and the city manager even said some nice things about.
Very good. Anything else? Thank you, Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I briefly, uh, give an update on my tour, the three-day tour to. Shepherd Apple Space, Columbia in, uh, Texas, and I hope you're well, there's better when you get to Texas than mine was, because it was raining. Cold and the wind was blowing, it was really bad, but the, the tour was good, um. What the process was that we went from. The day that they accepted the students in, and they take them in, it's age seventeen now, right out of high school. And they have to teach them everything, even as to how to be an adult. And the process that they have to do that was amazing, it was absolutely. He said you could give them a, a screwdriver, and they didn't know what to do with it, they didn't know what it was for, so they had to do the, the basics, total basics. And they do that through. Well, normally it would take two or three months to get them through that process, but now what they have is this. Training on their laptops, on their computers, where they can do everything on the computer and then take it to. Outdoors to where it needs to work, so that's been, that was exciting. And that was the beginning, and the next phase is when they would go in and actually start using the goggles to. Feel their way around to do things in the computer, I mean, the technology for the future is amazing. It's totally amazing, from there we went to the officers training where they actually. I was start to do the flights, and we got to watch the students that started at the beginning come through and take their first flight, that was awesome. It was really nice, everything was really good, the, the, the community. The theme was all throughout the whole three days was connecting to their community. It was really, I met with some of the mayors, the deputy mayors, and had some long conversations, and. They talked about some of their issues were lack of water, they had that drought that go through there. Um, that was flooding and through there, so it was, it was, it was really interesting, I think that, I think the one thing that I took away from it was the fact that. That group worked so well together, even though. They have to do some correction, they do it in a way that you don't feel like you've been corrected. I really was, I was impressed with that. Yeah, and so I think that was the highlights that I wanted to. Some, but I think if the opportunity prevents, it prevents itself again, I'd like to see some other people, um, go to that. I did meet some of the students that are graduated that are gonna be coming to McCourt. That's a great, great trip. Fast.
Yes, I'm sure. I'll keep it brief, are you, is that it? Thank you, um, PCRC, I won't be able to attend this Thursday, so, Mr. Bokey, if you will raise the flag for us and the General Assembly. Yeah, exactly, something humorous, yeah, yeah, exactly. So that'll be great, and then, uh, I did attend the Carrying for Kids. Event on Saturday at the city table with many of you, so it was a good worthwhile event, well-attended, and I hope they raised, uh. Great funds for their programs. They did, lots, lots of events, it is auction season, it seems like every other weekend or every weekend, there's an event to support and go to. Uh, on the twenty-fifth, speaking of events, there is, I believe, is it the. Lions Club event that night, and there's also the Asian Pacific Cultural Center, they're having some event that evening. Uh, they wanted me to speak, I can't, because I'm gonna probably either go to the Lions event. And I had a triple book, so if someone wants to go to that and speak on behalf of the city, let Ms. Schumacher know so she can advise, uh, Lure Pritchard. Uh, on that, I, we are doing a welcome letter, as we always do, for their event to put in the program. So you're welcome to do that if you'd like, but there are like multiple events on multiple events. So you're welcome to do that if you'd like, but there are like multiple events on multiple events. To attend, so, and I think you've updated all of our calendars with a bunch of stuff, right? I heard that there was some sort of pinging going on as the city clerk is sending us thousands of scheduled events for our calendar. All right, well, thank you. No need for any sort of executive session tonight. I thought the, the information tonight was fantastic. On the wayfinding signage and the street ends report and it was great to see the youth. More to follow on the Youth Council Summit.
I have, I have a question for Deputy Mayor Moss. Does, does the Air Force Officers Course still have the half-day session on making a tee time?
Mr. Bokey.
I just wanted to share some good news. Uh, when, when Carrie Pedrick was here with Communities and Schools and she is. Chose an executive director and I think there's at least three of us who have been board members on Communities and Schools here in Lakewood. Um. They're going to be approved tomorrow. Th- 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 she already talked about her. Be, getting money from the behavioral health tax. It's countywide outside of Tacoma. Tacoma has their own. And they had already received almost a hundred and eighty-two thousand. In a resolution tomorrow, they're included in it for another two hundred and twenty-eight thousand from, from mental health stuff in the schools. So, right, I mean, that's a, a very positive thing that, and that's for the remainder of this calendar year. So that carries them into the next, uh, to the end of, of twenty twenty-three. And then with their new biennial budget, they'll probably have a new round of funding here, coming out for the next biennium. In the next way, so that's a tangible result of that, of seeing that behavioral health tax.
Fantastic. Any other alibis for the good of the order? If not, we're adjourned.